All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council meeting for the City of Glendale of September 19th, now being convened at 6:03 PM. Let us have a roll call, please.
Council members Asadurian.
Here.
Divine.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Brotman and Mayor Protam Kasakian.
Here. And I just want to let folks know, who may be watching at home, to not adjust your televisions, I am not Mayor Brotman. Mayor Brotman is actually out of the country. He will be returning and presiding over these meetings next week. So this will be two weeks that I've had the privilege of presiding over these meetings, but we'll be back to business as usual upon his return, hopefully. So with that, I'd like to ask everyone to stand up and salute our nation's flag and remain standing for the invocation. Place your right hand over your heart.
Ready, begin.
(inaudible)
Please remain standing for the invocation, which will be delivered by City Clerk. How about you?
Let us begin by acknowledging that we are standing on the indigenous lands of the Gaberlino Tongva people. We are united by our shared humanity and commitment to justice and compassion. Let's offer our support to all indigenous peoples around the world, and in particular, to the indigenous Armenians of Artsakh, who have been enduring a dire and prolonged man-made humanitarian crisis. For nearly 10 months, our fellow human beings in Artsakh have faced a relentless blockade, a situation that has resulted in severe deprivation of food, medical supplies, fuel, and other essential resources. As we stand here today, we are filled with great concern and sorrow, as we witness the Azerbaijani military commencing airstrikes on Artsakh and our sister city Martuni. This act of aggression and violence not only threatens innocent lives, but also casts a dark shadow on the principles of peace and humanity that we all hold dear. We must recognize that what is unfolding before our eyes has all the signs of ethnic cleansing and genocide. We cannot remain silent or indifferent in the face of such injustice. Together, let's raise our voices against this grave injustice and strive for a world where the rights and dignity of all indigenous people are respected and upheld. Thank you.
Great. May we please have your report?
Yes. The agenda for the September 19, 2023, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on September 14, 2023, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you very much. We have presentations and appointments next. And we have the agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, September 26, 2023.
Good evening, Mayor Protam Kasakian, members of the City Council. Next week, we'll start off our afternoon meetings with a joint meeting of the Housing Authority and the Glendale City Council. There are two items on that agenda. The first would be regarding funding recommendations for the submission of the Glendale Continue of Care Funding Application. And the second item would be related to reprogramming of Community Development Block grant funds from 2021, 22, and 23, 24. That meeting will be followed by a special meeting of the City Council in the afternoon. Three items on that particular agenda. The first item from Community Development, related to use of City Days at the Alex Theater. Second item from Public Works, related to the Slow Streets, an evaluation of the Slow Streets pilot program. And the last item, again, is from Public Works. It's just a presentation on AB43 Business Activity Districts. The evening meeting of the Council, I believe, has eight items under consent. The first from Glendale Water and Power, related to the power content label for calendar year 22. The second item from the Fire Department, regarding authorization to amend an agreement with City Gate Associates to add additional services for the Vertigo Fire Communications Center assessment and multi-year strategic planning efforts. Following item from Police Department would be related to acceptance of grant funds for Selective Traffic Enforcement Program. That'll be for things related to distracted driving, vehicle code, bicycle, pedestrian, and driving under the influence violations. That'll be followed by the Public Works Department, related to adoption of plans and specifications for the Palmer Avenue and Green Streets Rehabilitation Project, followed by another item, seeking Council's approval to accept grant funds from the Burn Discretionary Grant Program. Human Resources will provide a report for the establishment of classification titles and compensation for certain employees in the city, followed by a professional services agreement for professional consultant services, related to the citywide traffic and mobility study. And the last consent item that evening will be regarding the 2023 Slurry Seal and Crack Seal Program. We will have two adoption of ordinances. The first would be adopting an ordinance, extending the moratorium on existing drive-through waiting lanes citywide. And the next one will be related to an adoption of ordinance, amending the Glendale Municipal Code, related to the streamlining of the city's historic district designation process.
All right, thank you very much. And yes.
I apologize, that particular, that second one, for the streamlining has been moved to October 10th.
All right, thank you. All right, I appreciate that. So next, on the agenda, we have recognition for two very special and courageous individuals. So we have commendations for Natalie Petros and Angela Safarian. So if we can please have them come up to the podium as I read these mayor's commendations. Okay, it reads, "Mayor's Commendation Presented to Angela Safarian and Natalie Petros." This is by Mayor Dan Brotman. "I am honored to extend my heartfelt congratulations and deepest gratitude to you for your remarkable and selfless act of heroism in saving the life of 86-year-old Maureen Paharo from drowning. Your quick thinking and brave actions serve as an inspiring example of compassion, courage, and community spirit that we are proud to recognize. On behalf of the City of Glendale, I wish you continued success. Signed, Mayor Dan Brotman." Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
Quite an accomplishment. So are you going to tell us what happened, or?
So it was a normal weekend. Me and my friend, we decided to go to swimming in my aunt's apartment. We were having a great time, and then we see this lady coming. We didn't know the lady, and she was having a hard time walking, so it really concerned us, but we didn't really pay attention to it until she came into the pool, and we started hearing voices that she was saying, "Help me, help me." And it really concerned us, and me and Angela, we swam, and we saved her.
All right, thank you. And what did you do? You pulled her out? I'm sure you called 911?
Yes, we pulled her out. We asked her if she needed water, sunscreen, or anything. And she was okay, but she was really scared. And we're really happy that we could save her. Yes.
All right. Well, thank you very much for representing the best of what Glendale is. Angela, did you want to add anything to the story? Did she say it exactly how it happened? Is there anything else?
Actually, there is. Just, we're really scared at the time. Because it was just like a moment, I don't know, the moment of, you know.
We were really scared because we didn't know how to act, if we should call 911, or ask a member. But thank God, she's okay, and yeah.
Yeah. Well, you did an amazing job, and I'm sure our police and fire personnel would tell you that in situations like that, it's okay to be scared, but it's overcoming that fear is what separates regular folks from heroes like you. So congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
Tell us about yourselves. Where do you go to school? Do you live here in Glendale?
Yes, we live in Glendale, California, and we tend to Herbert Hoover High School.
Okay, great. And what area? Are you graduates?
Graduate seniors.
All right, congratulations. Good luck. All right, with that, I'd like to present these mayor's commendations. Did any of my colleagues wish to say a few words? only assume is an individual you were able to rescue. And again, good work. Next, we
Just a note of thanks. And as a Hoover alumni, I expect nothing else than exemplary
have a proclamation designating September 22, 2023, as California Native American Day.
service to the community. Thank you.
I'm just Mayor Protam. I think all of the councils should come down.
And accepting the proclamation, we have, I hope I pronounced this correctly, Ravina
Good.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Soto. Did I pronounce that correctly?
(inaudible).
Please, please, please.
Three, two, one. Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, it's Ravina.
Ravina. Thank you. Thank you. So you are a representative of the Enterprise Ranchera
Thank you so much.
Tribe, and I'd like to read this proclamation now to you. It reads, "Whereas the City of Glendale recognizes the importance of acknowledging and honoring the rich history, culture, and contributions of California Native Americans, whereas California Native American Day provides an opportunity to celebrate the heritage, traditions, and resilience of California Native American peoples; and whereas California Native American Day offers a chance to educate the community about the diverse California Native American cultures that have shaped our region and our state; and whereas the City of Glendale aims to promote inclusivity, diversity, and respect for all individuals and communities within our City of Glendale limits; and whereas California Native American communities have made significant contributions to the growth, development, and progress of the City of Glendale throughout their rich traditions, through their rich traditions, art, language, medicine, environmental stewardship, and more; and whereas recognizing California Native American Day will foster a greater understanding and appreciation of the historical and contemporary issues faced by California Native American communities; and whereas many counties and cities across the state of California have already established California Native American Day as an official observance to honor the indigenous peoples of this land, now therefore, I, Daniel Brotman, Mayor of the City of Glendale, proclaim September 22, 2023, as California Native American Day, and encourage the City of Glendale residents, educational institutions, and community organizations to observe California Native American Day through activities, events, and educational initiatives that promote understanding, cultural exchange, and respect for California Native American traditions and contributions. The City of Glendale will strive to incorporate California Native American history, culture, and perspectives into educational curricula and public programs within the City of Glendale. The City of Glendale encourages local businesses and organizations to support California Native American artisans, entrepreneurs, and cultural initiatives through partnerships, collaborations, and sponsorship opportunities. And the City of Glendale calls upon neighboring jurisdictions to recognize California Native American Day as an official observance, highlighting the importance of honoring and respecting the Native American peoples and their contributions to our society." Signed by Mayor Dan Brotman. And it is my honor to present this to you. And if you'd like to say a few words, let me hand this to you, and then the podium will be yours.
Okay.
So thank you for the introduction. My name is Ravina Soto, and this is my son, Hendrick. And we are members of the Enterprise Rancheria Midu Tribe from Northern California, and that's from my mother's side of the family. And I'd really like to start with an acknowledgement for California's first people, because you did give one, but it really wasn't about California native people. So California has 109 federally recognized sovereign tribal nations, and many more that are still seeking acknowledgement and fighting for their own recognition. So California native people are still here today, and we are on the unceded territory of the Gaberlino Tongva people. And it's really important to understand that despite this violence and intentional exclusion, marginalization, and dispossession of land and resources, we are still here, and we fight erasure all of the time. So I would really like to ask you, next time when you do give a land acknowledgement, that you include California's native people and the tribe whose land we are occupying. And I'd really appreciate that, moving forward. I would like to share something. I did bring a letter from my father. So my father is a member of the Gaberlino Tongva Tribe, and this is his short letter that he would like me to share. "My name is Vincent Carlos Soto. I'm a member of the Gaberlino Tongva Tribe from Southern California. I was born in Boyle Heights in 1941 and grew up in San Gabriel, a few blocks from the Mission. Growing up, my family was considered Mexican. It didn't seem to matter, because we were equally discriminated against. I was in second grade, right after Mendez versus Westminster desegregated Southern California schools and stopped the practice of sending Mexican-American students to separate remedial schools. My mother decided to transfer me and my two siblings to McKinley School in San Gabriel, because it was supposed to be a better school. My experience at this school was not better. It was traumatic, because I was bullied and isolated from the white students. I told my mom I didn't want to go there anymore, because the kids were calling me names and wouldn't let me play with them, because I was Mexican. This is when my mom told me that I wasn't Mexican, but an Indian. She told me we had relatives buried in the San Gabriel Mission and took us to visit. We went into the chapel, and she told us we had to be respectful, because our ancestors were buried in the walls and under the floors. I didn't understand what any of this meant as a child, but later I learned about the mass graves of native people around many of the Missions. I had to look up who the Indians were and what happened to them on my own, because we weren't taught in school. I read they were killed off, and this was confusing for me as a child. I couldn't understand who I was. I felt like I didn't exist. In the past, no one wanted to hear our stories, but I believe people are more tolerant now. I hope we can acknowledge our history, so that life will be better for my grandchildren than it was for me growing up in Los Angeles. I'm happy to see more of a positive focus on indigenous people in California in a way that tells the truth about who we are and what happened to us."
Hello, I'm Hendrick Markarian. I'm a senior at Laconyada High School. My heritage is a blend of Native American and Armenian, Native American from my mother's side and Armenian from my father's side. Despite Armenians residing in this land for a relatively short period, we've brought with us a rich tapestry of food, culture, and other traditions that have shaped society around us. I consider myself fortunate to possess this strong identity. However, it also underscores the stark contrast that exists on my mother's side. While I've never personally encountered discrimination like my grandfather did, I can empathize with his experience of feeling invisible, even in a state as diverse as California. This invisibility is a reality for many California native youth. We are the descendants of the original inhabitants of this land, yet often our voices remain unheard, and we exist in a society that seldom acknowledges our presence. History has always been my favorite subject, yet the story of my own ancestry has been reduced to a mere footnote in our textbooks in the rare case it is included at all. In the future, I aspire to study tribal law, to safeguard our sovereign rights, and ensure native people have the voice they deserve in society. I recognize the opportunity I have pursuing this path, something that past generations were denied. As I stand before you today, I see how much progress we've made, but I'm also aware of the considerable work that lies ahead. I encourage each one of you gathered here to learn about California's original inhabitants, and to actively stand as allies and advocates for those who continue to call this land their home today. Thank you for your time and commitment.
Thank you, Hendrick.
Thank you.
Do we want to snap a quick photo? Did you want to? Is that?
Sure.
Sure, we'll do that. All right.
Oh, our phones.
item on the agenda, please?
Next item is number four, consent items, including minutes, the following a routine that may be acted upon. By one motion, any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
All right. So can we have a motion unless, well, do we have any cards to pull any items or any callers?
Mayor Protam, I do not have a card.
I'll move the consent calendar.
We have on consent items? I'm sorry, there's someone from my audience saying, is it on consent? Okay, I don't believe it is.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion by Councilmember Divine, seconded by Councilmember Najarian. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Asadurian.
Yes.
Divine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Kasakian.
Yes.
And Mayor Brotman.
Thank you. Next is City Council and Staff Comments. Who would like to go first? Councilmember Divine?
Thank you. Yeah, I just have one comment to make, and that is to congratulate Economic Development and Deputy Director Suaw for putting on a wonderful Tech Week, very successful. I attended the Pitch Fest, and I mean, to see, I mean, they were, these contestants, as they were, it's kind of like Shark Tank, geniuses with incredible, incredible ideas for startups. And then, of course, we had the reception at the Glenmark Hotel, and the winner was awarded. But the attendance was impressive, and I just want to congratulate our staff, Economic Development, for hosting a terrific eighth annual, wasn't it, eighth annual? And I was talking to some of the folks that were there, and they were saying that next year is going to be even bigger, because this one was so good. So thank you all, and congrats.
Okay. Councilmember Asadurian?
I think a lot of us are coming into this room with a very heavy heart today. I want to acknowledge our City Clerk Susie Abadjan, who opened this meeting, acknowledging what's happening in Artsakh today. For those of you that don't know, early this morning, Artsakh, including Stepanakert, which is the capital, has been bombed and shelled. Children, along with other civilians, have been part of those casualties. One of those casualties is also the mayor of our sister city, Martuni. And so I wanted to take this moment as an opportunity to once again plead to our residents, our nonprofits in the city, and whoever is watching. This is not an Armenian issue. This is not just a human rights issue. We are, the Armenian people are facing a genocide as we sit here today. Children and women have been moved into bomb shelters. Yesterday, they were hoping to have bread today because of the blockade. Today, they're hoping that they'll wake up alive tomorrow. And so I think it requires all of us to really look within, to see what efforts we're taking individually to call upon the US government. We're continuing to provide US military aid to Azerbaijan. We are continuing to provide support to that region in general, and I think it's way past time for just mere statements condemning and saying we're not going to tolerate, when in reality, really, the blood of those who passed away today and whose lives are at risk are on our hands. And so I know that there's going to be community members gathering and marching tonight. I would ask anybody that's watching to join. Your brothers and sisters on the streets, and I'm guessing that this effort is going to continue for the days to come. And so I really wanted to take a moment to acknowledge that. Also wanted to thank our Economic Development Team for the Glendale Tech Week. I had the opportunity to stop by the Women in Tech, as well as the award ceremony. You know, one of the facts I shared during the Women in Tech is, according to playbook, I'm sorry, Pitch Book, in 2022, only 2% of venture capital money went to women-owned businesses and startups, and that 2% is in the United States. When you look at Europe, it drops down to 0.9. And so while we may claim that we've come a very long way, the investment that we make in women-owned businesses and the dreams that come with it are also a testament to our values. I think that's all I got for today.
All right. Councilmember Najarian, did you want to say anything?
No, I just fully support the comments regarding the current bombardment of our Republic of Artsakh. Last week, we were discussing, celebrating, and commemorating the new president's election. That president might not be around to get a copy of the resolution that we may be discussing. And I know you have some comments as well, Mr. Mayor. I'll defer to you.
Thank you. I think that we all have spoken about this probably more than we would like to. We would like to live in a world where everyone can live in harmony and peace, but unfortunately, there are individuals and governments that do not adhere to the same norms and civility that we here as Americans oftentimes may take for granted from our places of comfort and relative security. I awakened this morning to read the news, as I often do, and was disturbed, deeply disturbed, at the reports that, as Councilmember Asadurian said, the shelling and what appears to be an all-out assault on civilian populations throughout Artsakh that have been in a tenuous ceasefire, supposedly being overseen by Russian peacekeepers. It has been, the peace has been violated, and attacks have been made. And, you know, this has been ongoing. There has been a blockade. I talk to folks in Artsakh at least once a month, if not more often, to find out what the situation is like over there. These are people that I've met face-to-face during my visits there, during my visit there with Senator Portantino, and at that time, it was Councilmember Sinanian. And we've developed relationships. Our sister YMCA, our Glendale YMCA, is in Stepanakert, and these kids go to summer camp, and they just came from a camp, and a lot of these kids had families that they had lost. So each and every single day, I wake up hoping that someone I know has not been hurt or has not died because of what's happened. I think that's something that we all grapple with. And earlier today, in a meeting, my phone went off, and it was one of, a member of the Armenian media who informed me that the mayor of Martuni, Oznavur Sarian, was killed. And it was particularly jarring. to negotiate a peace. And I think it's important for our leaders in Washington, D.C., if we are going to be a moral beacon for the world, to speak with clarity on these issues, to call out the government of Azerbaijan and the petro-dictatorship that runs that regime, and speak out for people who simply wish to live their lives in peace. So may he rest in peace, just 34 years old. Thank you. And with that, I mean, I will say that it's hard to shift gears, but Tech Week was a success. Thank you to staff, thank you to everyone who participated. It was a remarkable event, and just goes to show what great things we're able to do here, that we're fortunate to be able to do great things like Tech Week here. So with that, I would like to move on to the action items. And, oh, we have community event announcements, that's right, I apologize. We do have community event announcements, do we have any cards submitted?
We do not have any cards submitted.
And any calls?
And we do not have any callers.
Okay. So with that, thank you, Mr. Galanian, for stopping me as I jumped ahead of myself. We do have three items on the agenda under action items, but I wish to take item 8C out of order. If we can please have 8C read into the record.
City manager regarding proposed memorial square to honor Sadow S. Munemori Memorial Square. One, motion approving the naming of the intersection of Broadway and Isabel Street as Sadow Memorial Square, and directing staff to manufacture and install two signs at the north and south legs of the intersection on existing traffic signal poles. Two, motion providing direction to staff.
Thank you very much, and I wish to take this item out of order because we have a couple of very special and honored guests with us this evening. We have representatives of the consulate of Japan, including our Consul General, Consul General Sonae. Thank you for honoring us with your presence, as well as the Executive Director of the Japanese-American Gopher Broke Museum in downtown Los Angeles, just in Little Tokyo, Mitchell Mackey. Thank you for joining us. With that, Mr. Galanian.
Thank you, Mayor Protam, members of the City Council. As you noted, and if you recall, last year, you, Mayor Protam, at the time Councilmember Kasakian, requested consideration of naming the intersection of Broadway and Isabel Street as Sadow Memorial Square, in honor of Glendale-born Sadow Munemori, who was the only Japanese-American soldier to be awarded the Medal of Honor during World War II. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Stephanie Machlian, who has a brief presentation, and then we'll turn it over to our special guest for comments.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian. My name is Stephanie Machlian, and it is my honor to present tonight. Hello, Mayor Protam Kasakian and members of the Glendale City Council, thank you for having me. I am joined by Dr. Mitch Mackey, President and CEO of Gopher Broke National Education Center, and, as mentioned, Consul General Sonae. At the 2022 City Council meeting, Councilmember Kasakian requested consideration, as the city manager mentioned. Among many of the accolades that Mr. Munemori received for his selfless sacrifice and service, in this slide, you will see Sadow's mother and sisters being honored with President Kennedy shortly after World War II. This is one of the many artifacts our city historian was able to find for us, and I can bet that most of us here did not know that Mr. Munemori, Mr. Munemori's family owned a vegetable farm near San Fernando Road and Glendale Avenue, and that has been verified by our local records. Mr. Munemori was the only Japanese-American serviceman born in the city of Glendale to be awarded the Medal of Honor during World War II, and subsequently, 20 other Japanese-American soldiers have been upgraded to the Medal of Honor later in June 2000. In this next slide, you'll see the intersection of Isabel and Broadway, which was identified for the proposed memorial square. You may also see Sadow Munemori's name etched onto our World War II memorial wall, and I wanted to bring that up to our attention. Here in this slide, you will see the proposed Sadow Munemori sign. For your consideration, the sign reads, "Sadow Munemori, an American soldier of Japanese ancestry in the famed 442nd Regimental Combat Team, was awarded the Medal of Honor during World War II for his sacrifice and acts of heroism, despite his family being imprisoned in an American concentration camp." This effort would not have been possible without the support of our stakeholders and our city departments, notably our Library Arts and Culture, Public Works, and our graphics team. With this, at this time, I welcome Dr. Mitch Mackey to the stand, and we'll take questions after Council General is given the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mitch. Good to see you. Thank you for coming.
Good to see you. Acting Mayor Kasakian, members of the Glendale City Council, before I begin with my prepared remarks, I want to offer you my personal condolences and empathy for the terrible acts of violence which are occurring today across the world. And I join you in our hopes that our nation and the world will rise up and hopefully end this genocide in the near future. I thank you for your work in addressing this to the world. As was mentioned, my name is Mitchell Mackey, and I am the President and Executive Director of Gopher Broke National Education Center. We tell the story of the Japanese-American soldiers of World War II, who despite the fact that their government distrusted them, the American government distrusted them, and the fact that they were incarcerated with their families simply for being Japanese-American, chose to fight for our nation, chose to fight in a segregated unit, which would go on to become the most highly decorated unit of its size in American military history. These young men would demonstrate the wisdom of America's promise, the promise that in our nation, no one is to be judged by the color of their skin, the nation of their family's origin, or the faith that they choose to keep. It is a promise that upholds the belief that diversity is a strength and not a weakness in our nation. Thank you for your consideration of this motion. To name a prominent intersection in Glendale after Sadow Munemori would be a worthy recognition of a son of Glendale, of a patriotic American who was the child of immigrants, of a selfless American soldier who gave his life in order to save the lives of two of his fellow soldiers, and of a well-deserving Medal of Honor and Purple Heart recipient. April 5, 1945, as a member of the famed 100th Battalion 442nd Regimental Combat Team, Private Munemori engaged in fierce combat in Italy as the U.S. Army attempted to break through the Gothic Line. Single-handedly, he took out two Nazi enemy machine gun nests and then sought cover in a crater. And as he jumped into the crater, a hand grenade hit his helmet and rolled in front of two of his fellow soldiers. Private Munemori immediately dove, not away from the grenade, but on top of the grenade, and smothered its explosion with his body, saving the life of his two fellow soldiers and giving his life in the process. Sadow performed this act of bravery and sacrifice while, at the same time, halfway across the world, his mother was imprisoned in Mantinar, an American concentration camp, her only crime being Japanese-American. Sadow Munemori's actions reflected the very best of what our nation has to offer: courage, patriotism, service. On a personal note, as a father of two adult children, I often wonder why historical places are named after certain individuals. Well, in this case, however, there's no question in my mind. While no person, no young person should ever die in war, the qualities that Sadow Munemori demonstrated, love of country, love of family, and loyalty to friends, are the qualities that we can only hope that all American children, and certainly the children of Glendale, should emulate. I thank you again for considering this motion, and I urge your strong support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey. Council General?
The Honorable Mayor Protam, Mr. Honorable Kasakian, and Honorable City Council Members, good evening. My name is Kenko Sonae. I'm Consul General of Japan in Los Angeles. It's my very honor to be here, first time in this City Council meeting. And thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak in support of the proposed proposal to designate Sadow Munemori Square in the city of Glendale. It's a powerful and moving to see an important hero of the Japanese-American community to be considered for the recognition through the designation and be celebrated his roots in the city of Glendale. My office has closely working together various projects and initiatives with the anchor institution of the Japanese-American community, including Gopher Broke National Education Center and the Japanese-American National Museum, for many years since they were founded in 1980s. The government of Japan supports various initiatives aimed at strengthening the relationship between Japan, between the Japanese-American community and Japan as an integral component of the Japan-U.S. relationship. The government of Japan also strives to promote understanding and appreciation of the Japanese-American history in Japan. The proposed Sadow Munemori Square will provide additional landmark in the Los Angeles region. I hope the square will encourage Japanese people to visit and to understand the impact of Japanese-Americans, not only in the place like in Little Tokyo, but also beyond, including in Glendale. I would also like to take this opportunity to acknowledge and thank the city of Glendale for its sister-city relationship with Higashi Osaka since 1960. The Shoseyan Japanese Tea House in Brad's Park provides a beautiful reminder of the special relationship. So if named Sadow Munemori Square, we also provide a lasting landmark of the Japanese-American presence in Glendale and inspire all who have passed through the intersection of the heroism and self-sacrifice of Mr. Munemori, and the resilience and the remarkable contribution of the entire Japanese-American community. So thank you very much for having me to speak in front of you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Council General. Does, do my colleagues have questions for staff or any comments? Do we have any callers as well, or do we only have?
Mayor Protam, we don't have any cards or callers.
Thank you. Councilmember Asatryan?
I'll start with saying thank you to you for initiating this. I think it's a wonderful idea, and I think one of my favorite things is, I think, especially when I go around Boston, is looking at all the history as you kind of walk down the street. And I think having such plaques around the city just make it more interesting. The one comment I would make about the description, if it is possible at all to include something about him being Glendale-born, to tie it back in to his roots in the city, but everything else looked great. Thank you to the staff and to the Council General and everyone that worked on this. That's all.
Councilmember Devine?
Thank you. I just want to say that this is quite a story. I had invited a friend whose uncle served in the 442, Glenn Yamada. I told him to be here at 7:00, so he's probably going to be here at 7:00, and I, yes, I would really, I would really like for you to meet him and speak with him. I'm very proud of our city for doing this. Thank you, Councilmember Kasakian, Mayor Protam, for initiating this. I think it's a wonderful way for us to honor the memory and the heroism of this gentleman. So that's all I have to say, and I, you know, I look forward to seeing the sign on the intersection. Thank you.
Councilmember Najarian?
I mean, incredible story of heroism and selflessness for his fellow colleagues and for the United States. I think it's a very fit dedication for this fine Japanese-American Glendalean, and I think we'll always have a warm spot in our heart as we pass through that intersection, which is just outside the door, and we'll be happy to remember Sadow Munemori.
Thank you very much. I'm very excited that we're able to finally do this, to approve it with the vote of council. And the way I came to know about Sadow Spud Munemori, his nickname was Spud because, unlike many of his other Japanese-American friends, he did not like rice, he liked potatoes. So he acquired the nickname Spud that he carried with him through his military service. If you go down to the museum where Mr. Mackey is the Executive Director, there is a special exhibit just on him because, you know, the fact that he was a recipient of the Medal of Honor during a time when there was extreme discrimination against minorities who were serving in our armed forces in segregated units, not just the Japanese-American, but also African-American units that were segregated. It's a remarkable story of the tenacity and dedication of individuals who were both related to Mr. Munemori and to the people that they knew in high places who could make things happen. And he was the first and only recipient of the Medal of Honor, Japanese-American recipient of the Medal of Honor, even though we've had individuals who served in the 442nd Broke, who've gone on to serve as U.S. senators in our hallowed halls of Congress, they did not get their acknowledgements until the year 2000, a long time after, when history was finally made right. And I found out about Sadow Munemori because when I was city clerk, I would walk in and out of the city clerk's office, and just on the side of the wall in City Hall, there was a framed picture of the Medal of Honor with some text underneath it. Never thought twice about it until one day I stopped to read it and read the story of Mr. Munemori, and then wondered why, and then went outside and looked on our war memorial. And on our war memorial, we name all of our sons and daughters who sacrificed their lives in various conflicts, serving our nation. And sure enough, his name was on there, and his is the only name that did not have a star next to it, but had the emblem of the Congressional Medal of Honor, designating him as a very special individual. So I thought it would be appropriate. It's a remarkable story of the tenacity and dedication of individuals who were both related to Mr. Munemori and to the people that they knew in high places who could make things happen. And he was the first and only recipient of the Medal of Honor, Japanese-American recipient of the Medal of Honor, even though we've had individuals who served in the 442nd Broke, who've gone on to serve as US senators in our hallowed halls of Congress, they did not get their acknowledgements until the year 2000, a long time after, when history was finally made right. And I found out about Sadao Munemori because when I was city clerk, I would walk in and out of the city clerk's office, and just on the side of the wall in City Hall, there was a framed picture of the Medal of Honor with some text underneath it. Never thought twice about it until one day I stopped to read it and read the story of Mr. Munemori, and then wondered why, and then went outside and looked on our war memorial. And on our war memorial, we name all of our sons and daughters who sacrificed their lives in various conflicts, serving our nation. And sure enough, his name was on there, and his is the only name that did not have a star next to it, but had the emblem of the Congressional Medal of Honor, designating him as a very special individual. So I thought it would be appropriate in that area where we do have a number of memorials. We have our, I believe, Memorial Day Ceremony there annually. It's a place where a lot of people will stand outside, you know, if you're walking in and around City Hall, you'll see people come by and read through the names, perhaps find relatives' names. I know Councilmember Najarian has a relative whose name is enshrined in the Vietnam Memorial. And I think that it's appropriate to have future generations know that this was a very special individual who paid the ultimate sacrifice, embodied all those characteristics that you spoke of, Mr. Maki, that I hope that future generations will also value, but also someone who did it despite some of the injustices that his people, his community, and his family had to endure. And anyone who thinks otherwise, anyone who wants to debate that, I suggest they go visit the museum, where you can see where families piled up all their belongings prior to being sent out into the desert, where they were kept under armed guard watch 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Their American, their civil liberties, their rights as Americans stripped of them. So I think this will be very appropriate. Thank you very much. By the way, not only is Glenn Yamada's uncle a veteran of the 442nd Gulf of Broke, he's also a veteran of our armed forces, but his wife is our resident historian. If many of you know Kathy Yamada's column in Glendale News Press, and I probably have read articles that she's written about this, I know she'll be excited about it as well. So with that, thank you. And if we can just show what this would look like, I know, Aram, that we had one slide that showed what these would look like in other cities. Los Angeles has a number of squares. They just named Artsakh Square in West LA at a very special intersection outside the Zari consulate. All right, here we have. No, I want to see the slide so we can show, and this is, this is what they will look like. There's a number of them throughout Los Angeles, and I think it's great to have ours and the first one to be for Sadao Spud Munemori. Thank you very much. With that, do we simply adopt a motion? And anyone like to make the motion?
I would be honored to make the motion.
Who would like to second it?
I'll second.
Okay. And you don't need, we don't need anything for the motion to direct staff, that's in case we had anything else to add, correct? So with that, we have a motion.
Would you be interested in adding that he, his connection to Glendale to the sign, or do you want to just approve it?
Yeah, we can, we will amend the sign to include his, his connection to Glendale. And also on our city's website or anywhere near the polls, with QR codes now, we can have it linked to the museum and where people can find more information about our Japanese-American history here in the city. So with that, with that amendment, and Councilmember Devine, do you accept that amendment?
Yes.
Yes, and it's been seconded?
Yes.
Let's have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Asatrian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kazuki?
Yes.
And Mayor Brotman?
Thank you, and congratulations. I tried as long as I could, Councilmember Devine, but I only got to 6:54.
I keep watching the door, and I'm maybe on your way out, you'll bump into them.
Stick around. Thank you very much, and it was an honor having you, Nur Chambers. Next, we will go to eight. Next, let us go to 8A. Can we have that read into the record?
8A, City Treasurer Regarding City of Glendale Investment Policy. One resolution adopting the city investment policy for fiscal year 2023 and 2024.
And should we, can we also read 8B into the record and have them presented?
You can do that, we've done that in the past.
Yeah, let's have 8B read into the record as well.
8B, City Treasurer Regarding Annual Review of the City Portfolio. One motion accepting report for fiscal year ending June 30, 2023.
All right, and with that, we welcome our esteemed elected treasurer, Mr. Rafi Manukian, to give us the good, the bad, and the ugly, hopefully more good than bad or ugly.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Kazuki and Councilmembers. I have no recommendation in terms of, in terms of the investment policy, and I will go really quick, I know you have a long night, really quick through my report. Our investment philosophy, of course, I repeat it every year, it's preservation of principle, making sure that we have enough liquid cash to meet our obligations and secure yield for the funds that are, that are for our idle funds. Our portfolio this year is over $1 billion. Our cash on hand as of June 30, 2023, our cash on hand is 67. And in terms of our asset allocation, there are no major changes. The only changes are we reduced slave and we've increased callable federal agencies and treasury notes. Our credit ratings, we keep improving our credit ratings for the portfolio as a whole. And our maturities, we're at approximately 27 months, and as you can see, it's comparable to last year's. Our yield is the blue line that continues to increase. As you can see, all of the, all of the interest rates have increased, the treasuries have increased considerably over the past year. We are in that trend as well, increasing the treasuries. This is my history since I took over the city of Glendale's treasurer's office. If you look at the last column, June 23, our portfolio is at 10, 1 billion, 20 million. Investment earnings are approximately 19 million. Rate of return, 2.7%, and our weighted average maturities are 27 months. And here's a comparable, some of the cities that we found that had their portfolios and their earnings published were a third from the left, were within the range, so we are still doing very well. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer it.
Mr. Manukian, would you continue with the next item, please?
Continue with what?
Next item.
Oh. Next item is the first item, which I said there are no changes to the investment policy, so the second motion is to note on file, and the first one is the investment policy, which stands as it is today.
Well, I'll just note, just want to say thank you. I actually briefly went over it before the meeting. What's the, if I may, looking at this last graph, what are some different policies that Anaheim or Burbank have in place?
I have not looked at their investment policies, their large documents, but they're relatively probably similar, it's just a matter of whether they want to invest short-term, when you're investing short-term. The interest rates are higher currently in the short-term, but that's not taking into consideration the long-term ramifications of such an investment. So I can't speak for Anaheim or Burbank, but I think we're well within the range.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
I'll move 8A and 8B.
Well, are there any cards?
Councilmember Asatrian, there are no callers or cards for this item.
So I'll second. All right.
Thank you.
Could we give a vote?
Second vice chair. Councilmember Asatrian?
Yes, I was waiting for you to.
We did have a motion to second, I heard, right?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Devine?
Yes.
Councilmember Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kazuki?
Yes.
And Mayor Brotman?
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Manukian. With that, what is next?
Mayor Protem, the next item is 9A, Hearings, Community Development Regarding Introduction of a 10-Month and 15-Day Extension of an Interim Urgency Ordinance Number 6009, prohibiting issuance of entitlements and/or permits for establishment of new or replacement retail uses selling firearms or ammunition. One is ordinance for introduction.
All right, Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Mayor Protem, Mayor City Council, in the interest of time, I'll just go directly to Bradley Calvert, Director of Community Development, to introduce this item for your consideration.
We'll open the hearing at 7:00 PM.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor Protem, members of the city council. We are requesting an extension or consideration of extension on the moratorium on firearm and gun retailers. Given kind of the scope and scale of the work that would need to be done, we were not able to get very far in this in this short window of time, as directed by council, for us to be able to proceed with the work and the analysis that was requested, we would need additional time. That work would include consideration of changing the allowable zones where these retailers are allowed, considerations of creating buffer zones from sensitive uses, and then also considering elements such as essentially a cap or a limit on the number of permits or licenses that could be issued. With that being said, our request would be, or consideration would be for extension of this moratorium.
Okay. And do you have a ballpark idea of when you think we would be able to have the discussion to finalize the CUP process?
Usually when we have a moratorium of this length, we try to get something back to council in the next seven to eight months so that we have enough time to consider any potential changes. This may take, we may need to come back a little bit sooner with that, given some of the impacts of the land use code, if we did not want to extend for a second time.
All right, thank you. Is there any questions from my colleagues? Councilmember Asatrian, and then Councilmember Najarian, did you have a question?
I had a question.
Go ahead, Councilmember Asatrian.
I, on the report, it notes that, obviously, if we introduced this today, it'll have to come back on the 26th. I had made it known to our city manager that I won't be here. If I'm not here, I recognize that this would require four votes. If we, we don't have room to move this item, right?
That's correct, it expires at the end of this month.
Okay, so if this does go through today, then I will be calling in just for this item, not today.
Okay. And that is, needs four votes for urgency?
So for tonight, it just needs to be introduced, but it'll need, it'll need four votes to be adopted and introduced, and without that, it won't take effect. The moratorium will expire and it cannot be introduced.
Got it. All right, thank you very much, and thank you for your willingness to participate. Let me close the, but, Councilmember Najarian, I apologize.
How are we defining firearms? Are we including BB guns? Are we including pellet guns? Are we including?
As part of this, we're not counting firearm, or, excuse me, pellet guns, BB guns. We would need to consider that definition potentially, depending on the impacts and what the scope of this work would be, we would include that as part of this body of work. What gets included in this?
Knives, we're not, we're not.
Would you like me to read the definition?
Yeah, please.
Sure, it's, firearm shall mean any pistol, revolver, rifle, shotgun, or other device designed to be used as a weapon, from which a projectile is expelled through a barrel by the force of explosion or other form of combustion, or any device which is capable of being altered so as to expel a projectile in such manner. So, yeah, the other.
Combustion.
Yeah, correct.
So CO2 or spring is not a combustive force. Okay.
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Thank you, Councilmember Devine. And public hearing was closed at 7:04, introduced by, ordinance was introduced by Councilmember Devine, thank you. Now we have a number of public hearings, what is next? We have actually, let's, yes, we have a couple of Mills Acts, so let's, Mr. City Attorney, can we read B and C into the record at once, even though we'll vote on them separately, since they're both Mills Acts?
My recommendation, so we have a clear record, is to introduce one, each one.
Okay, all right, then let's read 9B into the record.
9B, Community Development Regarding 1012 Crestview Avenue, Consideration of Glendale Register Nomination and Request for a Mills Act Historic Property Contract. One resolution to designate the residential property at 1012 Crestview Avenue as a historic resource in the Glendale Register of Historic Resources as the Mahoney House and authorizing the city manager to enter into a Mills Act Historical Property Contract with property owner. And two would be motion to deny the request of the property owner to designate the residential property at Crestview Avenue as a historic resource in the Glendale Register of Historic Resources.
All right, thank you very much. Let's open the hearing at 7:05 PM, and Mr. Galanian, I'll turn it over to you to turn it over to staff.
Mayor Protem, Mayor City Council, Jay Platt, our planner, with experience in this arena, will, will make the presentation on this item and the next item.
Good evening, the first of your two Glendale Register and Mills Act considerations is located at 1012 Crestview Avenue. It's a modest scale, but very nicely detailed Spanish colonial revival house built in 1932. You can see where it is in northwest Glendale, up toward Cumberland Road Mountain area and near Grand View. And like I said, as a, as a smaller house, there's a lot of detail packed into this relatively small package. We have a large picture window at the living room on the left-hand picture with a cast stone surround and some decorative ironwork. The front of the house is a little bit blank in some ways because it's actually a wall that fronts onto a courtyard within the, within the house, an open-air courtyard, so you can see that what looks like the front door is actually a gate with grill work at the top. And then to the right, you can see the diagonal stucco grill that opens it up a little bit, but still keeps the privacy and seclusion. Interesting features, like on the right-hand side of the, of the doorway, you have a stucco detail kind of stepping down. It's not there for any reason, except that it's an interesting architectural detail. Haven't really seen that on a lot of other houses. Here are some shots of the courtyard. The house was built for, sorry, let's check the first name, Clarence Mahoney, who was a school teacher in Sun Valley at Poly High School. And so it's interesting to always think about how these places were built, and they were for people of modest means, kind of teaching school, and, and really do have a lot of character. Because the Glendale Register covers all exterior portions of a property, this courtyard would be included in our regulatory oversight, even though it's not super visible from the street. Here's the garage with the very nice garage door. The current owner has done several pieces of restoration work prior to nominating the house, so this door was originally in very bad shape. She had a new wood door made to very closely copy what was there before, and she, she's done that on several other parts of the property. So overall, it's in excellent condition, maintains a high level of design and material integrity. Most of its original windows are in place, and she had some replaced because previous owners had taken them out. There are only a couple of issues when the Historic Preservation Commission looks at the properties for Mills Act consideration, they often put conditions on the work. Sometimes those are larger conditions, in this case, very minor, to repair some of the cast stone at that window surround, repair some of the ironwork. When HPC reviewed this nomination, they voted unanimously to recommend that council designate and authorize a Mills Act contract with the owner. The owner wanted to be here tonight, but she's not feeling well, so she stayed home, but obviously was very supportive and hopeful that you would follow through on designating the property. Here are the two, two Mills Act conditions, and it's also eligible only under the architecture criterion, criterion three, for the quality of its design.
All right, any comments? Councilmember Devine?
Yeah, I just want to say that the pictures do not do this home, this house, justice.
It's true.
It's gorgeous, it's absolutely beautiful, the exterior is impeccable. My question is, when we approve a Mills Act, is, is that in perpetuity, or is that just for the owners of the house at this time? Because she has no work planned, so my question is, why would she need the Mills Act?
Well, the Mills Act offsets ongoing maintenance costs for any property, which sometimes are considerable for historic properties. The Mills Act is in perpetuity, it runs with the property, not with the ownership. It's actually a 10-year contract that's automatically renewed every year, and that's not a Glendale situation, that's how the state created the law, the Mills Act law. So future owners will get the benefit from this as well.
Right, well, I ask that because when, on the, the contract, Mills Act contract, when it asks for work plan, she says none planned. And as I say, the house is impeccable, as far as I can see, and the two conditions that were put on the home by the HPC are minor. So I would definitely approve this house being on the registry. I'm not sure about the Mills Act, so I'll wait to hear what my colleagues have to say about that. Thank you.
Councilmember Najarian?
Could you go to one of the first pictures, I think the first one?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. Oh, no, keep going, is there one before that?
There is this one.
Yeah. Yeah. So who's going to fix that roof sag?
That's an interesting question. We thought that that was a problem.
Yeah.
We, originally, when we went to HPC, we made a recommendation that one of the conditions be to have a structural engineer review the garage and consider it. We believe now that that is a decorative aspect of the design to give it kind of a rustic quality. We were assured and looked at that there's no roof issue, but that's exactly the sort of thing. If we're wrong on that, if there is an issue there and it needs to be repaired in the future, that's the sort of, kind of, high-ticket item that would benefit from having the Mills Act tax reduction.
Right. Okay, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Asatrian?
I'm in favor of this. I love this house. It's beautiful. And whatever we can do to help offset the costs, I'm for it.
All right. I also would support approval of this for a Mills Act. And if anything else happens that makes it anything more than that in the future, certainly I support that as well. But we do have a card from the public. Ramella and Agi. Ramella, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Can I talk more than three minutes, four minutes?
Since you're the only speaker on this item, I'll allow you four minutes.
Yes, yeah, of course. Yeah, as many of you know that I'm a affordable housing activist. So basically, but yeah, today, I actually work for free for the public, but today, actually, I'm going to offer my service free for this council. Today I want to speak about, because I see that this council has a lack of knowledge of architectural, architectural field. So today I want to present a project. It has to do with restoration and preservation of the historical buildings. And today is the, this project that you see, it's, the architect is-
Mr. Mayor Protem, is this relevant to this item?
Yes.
Can you please tie it to this item, unless you're speaking about architecture generally?
This is how we do preservation, historical preservation.
Okay.
It's sort of, yeah, because I see that this council doesn't have the knowledge of how to preserve a historical building, historical properties. So that's sort of prevalent to that.
Okay.
Can I continue?
It's, it's a stretch. Can you please speak specifically to the property in question?
Yes, because this, this is a very good example of how to tie the old and the new architecture.
So are you for the Mills Act designation, or no?
No, I'm talking about, it has to do with the architecture preservation.
Okay.
So it has nothing to do with the act.
So I think, I think your comments will be-
But I know that this council has got, doesn't know the knowledge of how to-
Sure.
Do the restoration on historical building. That I want to give you some knowledge.
All right, thank you very much. If you can just hang on, perhaps you can share this information with us during the public comment period?
No, I'm not going to wait, no, I'm not going to wait there that long. You know that. I'm not, you know, I'm against that, that you moved that, that portion to the end of the council meeting, so that's, I'm not going to wait for that.
I'll give you one minute to wrap this up, but you got to tie it into the house that we're discussing.
One minute? No, I can't.
Okay. All right.
Right, but-
That's it. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Agi.
Yeah, basically, this project was, I mean, it was a very good example of old and new, infusion of old and new, which is, council doesn't know any knowledge of.
Okay, thank you. Next, Mr. Durham, you'll have, since I offered four minutes to miss-
I only need a minute or so.
Okay, go ahead.
Mayor Protem, members of the council, I just thought, as a member of the public, I've actually toured this home and inside and out, and I just wanted to say, you know, from the public's view, it is a great resource, and pictures really don't do it justice. And it's wonderful on the inside as well. So I'm just totally in support of the designation and the Mills Act. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Durham. There are no other cards on this, so the public hearing is closed. Who would like to make a motion to designate this property?
I'll move.
As a Mills Act Historical Property Contract?
I'll move.
All right, it was moved by Councilmember Asatrian. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. With that, let's have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Asatrian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kasakian?
Yes.
And Mayor Robyn.
All right, next item, please.
Next item is 9C, Community Development Regarding 1006 East Harvard Street, Consideration Glendale Register Nomination and Request for a Mills Act Historic Property Contract. One Resolution to Designate the Residential Property at 1006 East Harvard Street as a Historic Resource in the Glendale Register of Historic Resources as the Asa and Anne Fansette House and Authorizing the City Manager to Enter Into a Mills Act Historical Property Contract with the Property Owner. Two Motion to Deny the Request of the Property Owner to Designate the Residential Property at 1006 East Harvard Street as a Historical Resource in Glendale Register of Historic Resources.
All right, Mr. Glendale or Mr. Calvert?
We'll go directly to Mr. Platt.
Open the hearing, Mr. Mayor.
We'll open it at 7:17 PM. Thank you.
Okay. Different neighborhood, different era. This is an early Craftsman house in Glendale, located on East Harvard Street. And it was built in 1906, the year of Glendale's founding. And it's, as you know, we don't have a lot of properties like this in the city. And it was with pleasure that we learned that the owner was interested in nominating his house, his and his wife's house, to the register. It's an interesting property because it represents an early part of Craftsman architectural heritage, when it was kind of transitioning from the older Victorian styles to the Craftsman that we look at and know today. You can see it, it's located on the red dot of this early, early map of the city. So even at that time, it wasn't quite where they were identifying the city, but just across the street on the south side of what was then Fourth Street, near Avenue, or near B Street, which is now Belmont. Asa Fansette was an early Glendalean. He was active in civic life. We don't know too much about him. He was one of the first members of the Board of Trustees, which was the city council of that time. But he only served for a short time. He did go on to become the first postmaster of Glendale. We know so little about him that we can't really say the house is significant for its association with him. It would be nice to learn more, but we don't have much going. You can see, he's the guy with the beard here. His son was also kind of a businessman in Glendale who was remembered for years because he ran a laundry, first a dye works, and then a laundry that was in business through the 90s, Fansette cleaners, and before that Fansette dye works. So here's some pictures of the house. It has a more steeply pitched roof than we're used to seeing on a lot of Craftsman, and that's because it's, of its early date. It's also on this interesting concrete block foundation, which was kind of formed to look like cut stone. This is original. We see it on some houses. It's not super common. So it's nice to have that on this house. You have the very narrow wood clapboard siding, and then a series of great windows on the front facade with these upper sash with this kind of, I don't know what to call it, like extended hexagon diamond kind of shaped mountains on the upper sash. Coming around the back, we find that the house is in pretty, pretty much original condition. A few windows have been changed, and I'll talk about that in a second. So there's pretty straightforward detailing. Two-story Craftsman weren't that common at this point, so that's another interesting aspect of this property. The area you see in the picture on the right is, used to be an open porch that you see before this porch that was added later. And that was kind of like the mudroom of the house, and that was enclosed at some point. The commission, which recommended unanimously that this be designated and a Mills Act contract be offered, asked that several, well, actually, four windows be changed, including this one on the left side. And, whoops, I think there's another one. There's another one on the side of the house that was replaced. The other windows are original, so we have the model that we would use for the replacement windows, which would be made of wood. There are a few Mills Act conditions. The little cheek wall near the front entry stairs just needs some, some repair work to be done. You can see the boards are a little out of skew. The garage is not original to the property. You didn't have garages in 1906 generally. And even the older part of the garage was then later added on to. And you can see this little bump out, which often happened in the 50s when cars were getting bigger, maybe even in the 40s, so you could keep the car in the garage. The current garage doors are just pieces of plywood. The Historic Preservation Commission asked that a new garage door be put in there that would be reflective of the era. So we're going to recommend that something's of simple design. We've done that on a few other Craftsman. And then this garage also has a couple of vinyl windows that the commission asked to be replaced with wood-hung sash. Couple of other things. The chimney has some cracked stones at the top, so we, they asked that those be repaired. This gate on the side of the house that you can't really see was added, and the request is just to paint this so it blends in with the house a little bit better. Because of its early construction date, this was found significant under criterion one, because it reflects the early heritage of the city, and because these are more and more rare. And we also found it eligible under criterion three for its architecture as a representative of this transitional era of the Craftsman style. The commission added the six conditions you see here, which I think I've gone over all of those already. Yeah, so I covered all of those. And if you have any questions, I'm available, and I believe the owner is here to answer any questions you might have.
All right. Do any of my colleagues, we do have one card on this item, but do any of my colleagues have questions? Yes, Councilmember Najarian?
So was that a basement? I saw that door by the-
Yeah.
A full basement, or is that like a crawl space, or what is it?
We did not go down there, as far as I remember. I love going into basements, believe me. I just went in one today. But, but yeah, that's the hatch for the basement. If the owner speaks, you can double-check on that.
I was going to ask about that as well, and I was thinking of the horror movies that I see where they have people buried under there and they're captive and all that.
It was funny, the basement I went into today, one of, one of our colleagues likes the term murder basement, and the owner of this house said, when he moved in, he said this was a murder basement.
I think you guys have been listening to Too Many to Crime-
I wasn't far off.
-podcasts, and any of you who have lived on the East Coast know that those are fairly common in homes.
I'm sure the owner is, has a very tidy basement, very nice, so.
There's actually a home that's Craftsman that the city restored. I think it was like Heritage Garden Park that has a similar feature on the side. So it must have been pretty common, and something that was brought over from the East Coast.
Right.
When folks are moving here and building homes. Councilmember Asatrian? No?
Sure.
Do you have a question? Because I want to call up the speaker.
Oh, please call.
Okay, let's, let's hear from Ken Simon.
I should be fine.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Kasakian, and thank you, council members. When my wife and I purchased our house in 2019, we really appreciated its character and thought it would be a great place for our family. It was clear that the previous owners had cared for it, and we learned that they had put effort into restoring and maintaining it. But we had no idea of the history of the house, other than that it was built in 1906. My wife and I, though, we're librarians, both of us, and we felt compelled to start researching. That's when we did a deep dive. We built up a history of the past occupants of the home using city directories and old newspaper archives. Over the years, our home was occupied by a machinist, a plumber, a mail carrier, an aircraft worker at Lockheed in the 50s. In the 30s, it was home to a man who ran a small grocery store on South Adams, a store which survives under new ownership right to this day. But in the 1910s and 20s, that was when the Fansette family lived in the house, as you have now heard, our house has seen a lot over the years, and it's been cared for to the point where it's a piece of Glendale's history that is intact. And we plan to continue to care for it and to fulfill the conditions indicated under, to make it, under the Mills Act. As Glendale continues to evolve and change, I hope that our house will be added to the Register of Historic Resources and stand as a testament to the founding of the city. And lastly, just about the basement, I'll satisfy your curiosity. The back half is an unfinished full basement. The past occupants had a teenager who used it as their sort of dwelling to play video games and stuff. We don't decide what we're doing with it. The front half is more of a crawl space, but it seems pretty safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Well, this house, the way I describe this house is, it's a rose amongst thorns, because it's surrounded by apartment buildings and, and, I mean, just, and really old apartment buildings. And I also look at it as easy pickings for developers to just want to tear it down and build an apartment unit there. So I, I would approve this house. I appreciate the care that you, you're taking of the house and that you plan on taking. I appreciate the fact that your shirt almost matches the color of the house. So I would approve the, and also because there's so many conditions that the HPC put on this house. I think you do deserve the Mills Act. So I would approve both. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Asatrian or Najarian? No?
I'll go.
Go ahead.
As someone that lives in one of these thorns that are identified as apartment buildings, I love the fact that you want to keep the history of this home. I think one of the questions that I do have for Jay is, you know, the, the property that came before us, that was right by the train station, it wasn't in good condition. And I think during that meeting, Mayor Protem Kasakian had raised about maybe us creating a fund for these properties that are in South Glendale, and perhaps the individuals that own these homes, you know, wouldn't have the capital to be able to do this. I know I had made the same request during that meeting. What happens during, you know, with these requests that come in, or points that are made during a conversation on another subject? Do we need to bring that back up as a separate item?
Councilmember Kasakian, if you recall, we have a new process in place, where as a council member makes a request, we agendize it for the following week as new business.
Okay.
And then you vote on it to bring it back as a full, long report for your consideration.
Okay, awesome. Well, you have my support for this, so.
All right, I do have one more card that was submitted. Ramella and Agi, please, and I hope you've figured out how to tie your comments into this specific property and what we're discussing.
Yes.
Three minutes.
Yeah, that, that's, yeah, just because the mattress matches the color of the building doesn't, it doesn't mean that, was your mattress, or it was your sheets? It doesn't mean that this is, this deserve a nomination, to register nomination for a request for the, for a Mills Act Historical Property. So I don't see any, it is architecture significant in that, in that building. So basically, yeah, I disagree. I mean, I don't, I don't think that's a historical building. And as I said, mainly, I'm here for, for affordable housing. I don't want to really talk about this sort of issues, but you make me to speak, speak of it. So, yeah, because I, because I don't offer my architecture advices for free, but I, I work free for people, for the public, as far as advocating, advocating affordable housing and renters' rights. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we also have one caller on this item. Let's go to the telephone.
Chris Cragnotti. Chris, you have three minutes. Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protem and members of council, I'm Chris Cragnotti.
of it. So, yeah, because I, because I don't offer my architecture advices for free, but I work free for people, for the public, as far as advocating, advocating affordable housing and renters' rights. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we also have one caller on this item. Let's go to the telephone.
Chris Cragnotti. Chris, you have three minutes. Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem and members of council. I'm Chris Cragnotti. I'm the present chair of Historic Preservation Commission. As an aside, I too work for free in that position. I just wanted to point that out for a previous speaker. But I did want to speak really quickly about Harvard. I do have much admiration and respect for staff work on all of these reports and things. And I, the only caveat I had about this one in council, actually, you can adjust the designation as you see fit. So I want to point out that while Mr. Fansette may have been a trustee, you know, was a trustee, which is really great, and he was our first postmaster, I don't think the fact that we don't have a ton of information should necessarily disqualify this property as also being associated with someone of great importance, with importance to the city. There are, as you know, so many unsung heroes that are involved in the civic duties of our city. And, you know, a postmaster, probably not the most important job, but the first postmaster, that seemed pretty impressive to me. So if anyone on council thinks that perhaps this house could also be associated with someone that did great things for our city, I think this is certainly a house that would qualify that. And then just one quick caveat regarding the Mills Act in general, Ms. Devine did express concern about the fact that the previous item didn't need much work, and like this one does need work, and, you know, isn't the Mills Act supposed to offset the work that is the future work? One thing everyone should kind of know, the Mills Act process and historic designation process for historic resources is kind of complicated, and most average Joes don't totally understand how the process works. And so a lot of people think they have to do work before they bring the house up. You know, we've got to get this house, you know, historic and ready. They don't all understand that actually that's why we have the Mills Act. So while technically, the benefit of the Mills Act contract really shouldn't work in reverse for work that was already done, sometimes we have to kind of consider that some people don't really understand the process. And I know this homeowner went to, homeowner went to great lengths and great expense to, on that property, to bring it up to speed and make it really easy to nominate, let's put it that way, easy to approve. But she did do a lot of work. And the other thing I wanted to just mention is, again, Mr. Platt, I very much value your, your work. He mentioned that, that the contract does roll over to the next homeowner for the benefit of the next homeowner. I think it's also very important to note that it's also the future homeowner's responsibility as well. They don't get just the benefit, they take on the burden of responsibility of maintaining these homes, which can be very, very expensive over time. So that's all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, since we have no other callers, any other comments on this? Okay, let's close the public hearing. Councilmember Asatryan?
I, with respect to the call, I feel like going, you know, thinking about the first postmaster or taking those things into consideration is a slippery slope of who you choose and who you don't. And so I'd like to just go off of the house itself and leave it at that.
Okay. Anyone else want to comment on it? All right. Well, let me just say that I think, Mr. Simon, the house is a gem. It's a very nice and well-maintained home. I've walked that street many a times. When I used to live on the corner of Chevy Chase and Harvard, and would walk to work, I'd walk by that. And I grew up in the area, in the neighborhood on Cedar Street. There's a number of older homes. There's, of course, a very well-known one that I, we used to affectionately called the Munsters House, which has since been restored, and it's part of a larger apartment complex serving the disabled community. What is the name of that home, Jay? Remind me?
The Good House.
The Good House. That is the Good House, right? Named for someone named Good, not just because it looks good. And then there's also, and then what's a really spectacular home on the corner of Wilson and Cedar, the large one that's behind hedges now?
I am blanking on the name.
There's a number of these, yeah, there's a number of these really, really neat-looking older homes, including the one I mentioned, that the city preserved, the Craftsman, that was incorporated into a mini park. So yes, I would like to see these homes preserved as part of the heritage of the city when appropriate and where appropriate. And I think that we have enough to designate it, so we shouldn't look a gift horse in the mouth. Now, whether it's the first postmaster or someone who is a trustee, how long they lived there and all of those, I, with all due respect to Mr. Cragnotti, whose service I appreciate on the HPC, I really do feel that, I've said this before, I do not want my home to be considered historic, just because I lived in it, because I don't think it warrants it or is deserving of it. So I will support the Mills Act designation, but on the criteria that was mentioned, yeah. Well, because I'm worried. I want to be on the record, or any of our home. Maybe you want your home to be historic. I certainly wouldn't want mine to be considered. Right? I know, I know. I'm going to shoot myself in the foot.
You're not the first, because we did have another council member that wanted his house on the registry, because he was a councilman.
Really? Really? Okay. Well, eek. So with that, I think that I would also support the Mills Act designation for this one. Thank you.
I'll move the item, approve the Mills Act and the historic registry.
Who would second that?
Second.
All right. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Asatryan?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kasakian?
Yes.
Mayor Roblin.
All right. With that, let's go to 9D. May we have that read into the record, our last hearing for the evening?
9D, committee development regarding appeal of design review board, DRB approval of design review case number, PDR 2113521-B, to demolish the existing one-story, 3,246 square-foot, single-family dwelling with attached two-car garage, originally built in 1961, located at 1766 Celito Drive, and to construct a new two-story, 4,855, single-family, single-family dwelling with an attached subterranean three-car garage on a 23,620 square-foot, double-frontage lot located in the R1R zone, Class III new construction or conversion of small structures exempted exemption pursuant to Section 15303 of the State Sequel Guidelines. One, motion to sustain the Design Review Board's decision on February 9th, 2023, to approve the project with conditions and one consideration. Two, motion to continue the matter directing city attorney to draft findings, reversing the Design Review Board's decision and denying the project.
All right, thank you. Let's open the public.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, Councilmember Devine.
Yeah. Due to the proximity of the site of this project to my home, I will be recusing myself from this item.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Devine will not be participating in the remainder of, will you be, you'll be, and you'll be leaving for the remainder of the meeting?
Come back for a comment.
Yeah, I'll be leaving for the remainder.
All right, thank you very much. Have a good rest of the evening. And with that, we'll open the hearing at 7:38 PM. Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Mayor Protem Kasakian, Mayor City Council, Vista Izati, the case planner for the subject property will make the presentation this evening.
All right.
Is this it?
Yes, that's it. All right. Good evening, and thank you. This is an appeal of a DRB approval for construction of a new home at 1766 Celito Drive. The project applicant is Armalajadjian. He represents the owners, Dr. Jack Demarchian and Susay Bobbomian. The appellant is David Segarian. He's the neighbor directly to the north of the site, and the request is to overturn the DRB decision and deny the project. This is just an aerial showing the location of the property. It shows the double-frontage condition, and then the property in yellow is the appellant's property. All properties in this area are zoned, single-family hillside. The site was originally developed in 1961 with a one-story, approximately 3,200 square-foot single-family house with an attached two-car garage, swimming pool, and outdoor deck at the rear. A historical evaluation was prepared for the property, and it is included as Exhibit 11 with the staff report. Since this project was first heard in May 2022, staff has received over time several comment letters regarding the property and its historic status. The concerns are related to the design, the association with the Bystane family, and the architect Robert L. Earl. A copy of all comments received are included as Exhibit 9. This includes those comments that we received from the Glendale Historical Society, as well as its members and the surrounding neighbors. The applicant's consultant, Kaplan Chen Kaplan, has also prepared a response to those comments about the historic status of the property, and that is also included with the staff report. Staff has reviewed all the information provided, including written comments and all public testimony at the hearings, and it was determined that the substantial evidence had not been provided, and the property is not a historic resource. This just illustrates the existing site conditions. The house sits on a flat pad, and it's about four feet lower from the street. The average current slope is almost 40% on this property, and it has a very steep slope towards the rear down to Lower Celito. Just briefly to touch on the project history, this was first heard by the Design Review Board in May 2022, and they voted to return the project for redesign. There were six conditions that were related to lowering the overall height, following the site's topography, looking at alternatives for the siding of the subterranean garage, minimizing driveway width, and in general, reducing the overall mass and size of the project for better neighborhood compatibility, reducing lighting, and incorporating a rock roof design with the new house. The applicant revised the project design, resubmitted the current proposal several months later, and that was reviewed by the DRB on February 9th. They voted to approve the project with five conditions and one consideration. The appellant then filed their appeal on February 23rd of this year. The following slides provide a brief analysis of the original proposal that was returned for redesign in May 2022 against the current project that the DRB reviewed and approved with conditions. That is the subject of this appeal. The project in general is to construct a new two-story, approximately 4,800 square-foot house with an attached subterranean three-car garage, outdoor deck, and new pool. This shows the original and current site plan proposals. To address the board's return for redesign conditions, the southerly portion of the building was moved closer to the street, and I tried illustrating that kind of with that green line, so you could visually see that change. And the size of the house was reduced by 482 square feet. Additionally, it is worth noting that a DRB condition of approval from February will require the applicant to further reduce the size of the house. Oops. The deck cantilever, cantilevers were minimized with portions of the deck stepping down to follow the topography, and a DRB condition of approval will require that that deck be reduced further in size, and that's highlighted in yellow on the proposed site plan. The driveway width was reduced, and again, another DRB condition of approval will require that it be reduced further. Over 40% of the lot is ungraded open space and will be maintained as natural vegetation. The rest of the lot will feature new drought-tolerant landscaping, as well as some water features in the front yard. The subterranean three-car garage was reoriented so that it is now parallel with the street front and relocated below the house. Originally, it was relocated below the deck, which caused massing issues. Excuse me. The, the re-siding of the garage was also based off conditions from the DRB for the return for redesign, as well as suggestions made by board member Simonian during the first hearing. With this redesign, less grading is required for the garage, but it increased the amount of grading necessary to accommodate the driveway and the required backups. This just shows the changes in the first floor from the original and the proposed plan, as well as the outdoor areas. And this is just the second floor. As far as the roof plan, the applicant has addressed the condition related to incorporating a rock roof into the design. They're also proposing cactus at the top of the roof. That's a fairly unique feature. We don't really see that here in Glendale. So this is the original proposal on top, which is what the DRB first saw, and the current proposal with the redesign. As it relates to the height, a condition from the redesign was to lower the overall height of the project by three to four feet and rotate the livable space from the east to the west. They did move the space closer to the street, and they did reduce the height in, by lowering the pad about four feet. So it's still 32 feet tall, but it sits lower than it did before by four feet. With the project redesign, the size of the livable area was also reduced by approximately 452 square feet. The architect incorporated building volumes that articulate the facades, balconies, changes in facade planes to help break up the massing. Just briefly, one of the return for redesign conditions had to do with exterior lighting, which was significantly reduced almost by half in the current proposal. This is just a side-by-side comparison of the front and rear building elevations to illustrate the changes made with the redesign. The, a DRB condition of approval does require that the architect incorporate the original design concept, which would be that top corner with the wood siding, as opposed to the large blank wall, and that is going to be incorporated into the final project. Just a side-by-side comparison from the rear facade and the side facade, or side elevations. The proposed material board, it includes the wood siding, windows, the rock roof, railings, and the limestone siding that was proposed at the front. Brief summary of the DRB meeting. All five board members attended. The final vote was three in favor and two opposed to the approval of the project. The two board members that did not support the project had concerns regarding the property's historic status, neighborhood compatibility, mass and scale, and the amount of grading that would be required. Comments that were made by the board members during deliberation resulted in additional conditions of approval for the project. The board approved the project with five conditions. These conditions were related to reducing the size of the house, reinstating their original design concept, stepping back portions of the second-floor facade, minimizing the driveway width further, and reducing the size of the south deck. The DRB approval also included one consideration related to reducing the overall building height further. In response to the DRB conditions, the applicant has since revised the plans to illustrate how the project would comply with the approval for building permit plan check submittal. These are included as Exhibit 13 with the staff report, and they are for informational purposes only. The basis for the appeal is that by approving the project, the board violated specific provisions of law, exceeded its authority, failed to fulfill their mandatory duty, and they refused to hear or consider certain facts. The main point of the arguments in the appeal are related to three specific provisions of law. First, that the project violates the zoning code because the purpose of the R1R zone is not being met. Second, that the project violates the zoning code because the hillside development review policy is not being met. And third, that the project violates California Civil Code Section 5975 as it relates to compliance and enforcement of the track CCNRs. To the first two points, as proposed, the project complies with the zoning code development standards, including the zoning requirements for setbacks, FAR, lot coverage, and landscaping, and there are no variance requests with this project. To the third point, the city has no authority to enforce CCNRs. They are enforceable by the property owners, and this would be a civil matter that would have to be resolved by all parties privately. I would like to pause here and kind of leave it up to you guys. I can keep going with the more detailed summary of the appeal arguments, or I can stop here, open it up to questions, or you can open the public hearing. It's kind of how, would you like to proceed?
We've opened the hearing, and we're hearing from staff. I don't have any cards, but I'm assuming that we have cards, right? And we're going to have the applicant, appellant. I can ask my colleagues if they have questions at this point, but if they don't, in the absence of that, I would like to hear a little bit more about the arguments that are being made and how staff is prepared to answer them.
Sure, no problem. So, purpose of the R1R zone. The purpose of the R1R zone is to protect the single-family hillside neighborhoods and preserve valuable open space, physical features, and scenic resources, while allowing owners to substantially and reasonably use their property. The appellant contends that this purpose is not being met, and that open space on the lot is being minimized to allow lot is being minimized to allow for the project to have an oversized footprint and volume. Detailed analysis is in the staff report as to how the project does comply with the R1R zone purpose. I just want to touch on a few points. It complies with the forty percent minimum ungraded open space requirement. They are proposing to maintain forty-one point six percent. This is shown on the slides. I kind of did a before and after showing the ungraded open space in green. The project is also complying with the forty percent maximum lot coverage requirement, so there isn't an oversized building footprint. The project is proposing a lot coverage of approximately fifteen percent where forty percent is the maximum. And finally, the site is not slated for public open space. There's no blue line streams on site. It's not located in a primary or secondary ridgeline area and it's identified as an area of low visual sensitivity in the open space and conservation element of the city's general plan. The hillside development review policy. So, the appellant contends that the project violates this policy to support their argument that it does not meet the purpose of the R1R zone. One thing I want to just point out, these five criteria are not findings of fact. They are policies that can be taken into consideration in rendering your decision. The staff report, I kind of went through and I did a really detailed analysis of the five criteria against the appeal and I'm just going to touch on it, the main points of that. So, this slide illustrates the subject property and the properties within three hundred feet that are included in the neighborhood survey. First, while it may be the largest house, it is also on the largest lot at twenty-three thousand six hundred and twenty square feet. The proposed FAR, which is nineteen point two percent, is still in keeping with the neighborhood range, which is twelve point three percent to thirty-four percent, and the neighborhood average, which is twenty-one point eight percent. So, in the context of floor-area ratio, it's not excessive in that regard. While the proposed two-story home with a subterranean garage differs from the immediate neighborhood of one-story homes, the DRB did not cite any major concerns with this at either of the hearings, nor did they impose any conditions requiring the subterranean garage to be omitted from the project design or a reduction in the number of stories. The appellant also contends that all of the houses have a pitched roof, so the new flat roof is not compatible and a flat roof does not allow for the rooftop equipment and that this is intentionally not shown along with solar panels. That's not true. The immediate neighborhood has homes with flat and pitched roofs. Rooftop equipment is strictly prohibited by right in single-family zones, so that's not an issue. And state legislation precludes the city from using design review processes to impose any aesthetic standards on solar panel installation, so that's not something we have authority over. The appellant also contends that the modern design concept is not compatible with the surrounding homes. There is no predominant architectural style in the neighborhood. The homes in this immediate neighborhood vary from traditional and ranch-style homes to more modern designs, which includes the house two lots directly to the north at seventeen eighty Cielito Drive, which has a similar design aesthetic. Beyond the immediate neighborhood, if you look at the five-hundred-foot radius, there are homes along both Deermont and Starvale that are multiple stories, fairly large in size, and with a similar modern design concept. And then to the last point regarding California Civil Code 5975, the appellant contends that the project violates this code section because compliance with the CCNRs that govern the tract, which restrict height, are not being met. The CCNRs were originally adopted in nineteen sixty-one and amended in two thousand and three, I believe. The city does not have the authority to enforce CCNRs. It's entirely a civil matter between individual property owners that would have to be resolved through private court action, so this is not something we can consider with the appeal to overturn the decision. Staff is recommending city council sustain the DRB decision to approve the project with conditions and one consideration. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. And do we have cards on this item? Or do we just have callers?
Mayor Proten, we just have callers and we have five callers at this point.
Okay.
Do you want to ask the appellant or the applicant if they want to speak?
I don't know. It's Christopher Sagherian, David Beckian, Greg Sagherian, and I'm assuming it's Jonathan either Sagherian or Segberian. So, are those the appellants or applicants?
You need to fill out a card, yeah.
So, wait, we're getting a card submitted? And I'm assuming the applicant is here or presented? Okay.
May I ask a question while?
Yes, yes, certainly.
Our planner. So, there's a deck, a cantilever deck on one south, the south end of it?
South side towards the like steep portion.
What's the, what's the height of that from ground to top?
With the cantilever, the overall height from where it comes out of the ground is going to be thirty-two feet to the roof. I need to just check the plans for the height from the bottom of the deck.
Because we have a limit on that. Is it fifteen feet from?
It is, but they do not exceed that from what I recall.
But that's the, that's the max permissible.
Correct.
And that's new. That's going to be a new construction.
That is correct. The existing deck that is there, a lot of the building footprint will be on that existing deck area.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay.
All right, so. Mr. City Attorney, how do you recommend that we start this? Should we hear from the appellant first?
Yes, because he's got the burden.
Okay, Mr. David Sagherian, you have the podium and how much time would you need to state your case?
I'm going to make it as brief as possible, so maybe seven minutes to ten minutes, but not much more.
Okay, all right, we'll give you ten minutes and then if you?
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it.
And then we'll have the applicant speak and then you'll have an opportunity to respond.
Thank you. Okay, so I just heard Ms. Izati present to you that the building is in compliance with the standards, unfortunately, and respectfully, I'm going to disagree. But before that, let me introduce myself. My name is David Sagherian. I've lived in Cielito Drive for the last thirty years and I was thinking about it this weekend and I said to myself, I must be the one with the longest tenure in that neighborhood. So, when I bought the house in nineteen ninety-two, moving in nineteen ninety-three, I stepped out on the deck and it was a brilliant December night and the colors of the season with the lights was just amazing and I said to myself, I could get used to this. Now, the word Cielito, for those of you who are inclined to languages, means little heaven in Spanish, and it is actually a heavenly place to live in. I've seen over the last thirty years, almost every single house being sold and moved to a new owner. And every new owner respectfully treated the house and the character of the neighborhood and renovated their houses because they were all built in the sixties and respected the character of the housing, which was a one-story house with ranch style and pitched roof. There might be one or two houses that are flat roof, but most of them were respecting the standards of the neighborhood. Also, your standards, so I said every single owner except one, and that is Mr. De Mirjan and his architect are now presenting a two-story house that is twice the size of its neighbors and totally out of character. If you recall, fifteen minutes ago, there was a gentleman who talked about the house that he was living in and he liked the character of the house. And I think character is something that was really missed during the DRB assessment. They looked at the house in itself, but not the context of the house, the neighborhood of the house. And frankly, we all, you may have all visited cities like Paris and in England where master planning governs construction and makes the city more beautiful. And this was, this is a case where master planning made a certain neighborhood the way it is right now. And frankly, what this owner is introducing is chaos, going a total departure from the neighborhood. And I'm not, I'm not here to be an irate neighbor. I am a mechanical engineer licensed in the state of California, practicing for the last forty years, and I've built twenty billion dollars' worth of construction, hospitals, prisons, street transit, and commercial and residential. So, I'm a person who believes in codes and standards and I think you enacted those standards for a reason, so that you don't have people like us keeping you awake at night presenting items to you. So, how does this work again?
Got to click it right or left.
So, well, I claim those thirty seconds if possible. So, I've built complex projects and I'm coming in evaluating your standards and saying to you, if your standards are not respected and they are ignored, where do we go with that? These are your standards, they're exactly matching what Ms. Izati has presented earlier. And there's two key words I'd like to draw your attention to. One of them is they shall take into the following into consideration. Yes, consideration, but you shall take those into consideration. The other word is compatibility, and that was part of the two disagreeing DRB members. They said that the building is not compatible with the neighborhood. Now, I wish the word compatible was not used in your standards because compatibility may be obfuscating the intent. What you mean by compatible is similar in context, respecting the neighborhood, the character of the neighborhood. However, this owner and his lawyer go into harmony and harmony is not the issue here. You really want something that doesn't stick out like a sore thumb. So, again, I really wanted the word compatible to be clearly stated. So, what I did, I first established a table of the requirement of the standards, which is here, and we'll fill them up as we go. And then I went in and I, there was a clarification requested by one of the board members in the DRB meeting session in May of 2022. He asked, what does the city consider as compatible? So, with that, I'm having sympathitis.
I am being waived by Miss Symetitis, so yes.
Can you raise the volume?
I apologize. Yes, under?
Definition of compatibility.
Section thirty forty-seven oh four oh standards. Item subsection D. The review authority shall ensure single-family design is compatible with the character inherent within the surrounding neighborhood. Primary emphasis on what constitutes a neighborhood shall generally be given to the existing development pattern within three hundred feet of the subject property. So, special attention should also be placed on ensuring a positive design relationship with the adjacent developments and the developments on the block on which the proposed project is located.
All right, so we define compatibility as being compatible to the character of the neighborhood. So, it has to fit. It has to be similar. Okay, so, so the neighborhood, the three-hundred-foot diameter is a little bit smaller than what Ms. Izati showed, but I'm fine with that. This is the three-hundred-foot diameter circle around the property. And if you notice, every single one of them is a one-story residential house, ranch style with an attached garage. There's not a single property that's two-story there. If you're going to vote for this property being a two-story in a neighborhood that's full of one-story houses, you are not following the standards. So, every single one is one, one-story high with, and then this proposed comes in, it's a two-story, modern-style, flat roof with an underground garage. Where in that three-hundred-foot circle do you see a two-story, modern-style, flat roof with an underground garage? Where's the compatibility? That's number one. That's for character. Second, size. If you look at the sizes of that circle, look at the size underneath the number seventeen sixty-six, it's two thousand four hundred twenty-three square feet. Then one next door to it is two thousand one hundred forty square feet. You are putting a four thousand eight hundred fifty-five gorilla right by those little houses if you allow this project to go. The next house is my house, thirty-two fifty. I'm still sixty percent smaller than, than the neighborhood that that house. And the next house is three thousand sixty-six. The average is three thousand one hundred thirty-six square feet, average size, and this project's four thousand eight hundred fifty-five square feet. It's hundred fifty-five square feet percent bigger than the building averages and almost twice the size of the neighboring, immediate neighboring houses. Please, again, how is it compatible? How is it similar? How is it following the character of the neighborhood? Okay, number of rooms. Every single house in the neighborhood is almost three, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, some of them are four-bedroom, and, and the average is three-bedroom and three-bath. This proposed setup is five bedrooms and six bathrooms. This is for a family of four, two adults and two children, five bedrooms. What are we doing here? Is this in conformance with the character of the neighborhood? I beg, it's not. This is side-by-side comparison. This is the property next door to it. It's two thousand one hundred forty square feet, four thousand eight hundred fifty-five square feet property next door to it, two hundred twenty-seven percent, more than twice the size of this property. This is the next property underneath, south of it, seventeen fifty square feet. It's two hundred, twice as big as that property. What are we doing here? My property is three thousand two hundred fifty square feet. I'm happy to live there. I'm going to enjoy living there. This is the neighbor that's going to come in and put two-story in front of my house. The privacy is going to be lost and, and it's going to be affecting the value of every single property in the neighborhood. And then finally, the next-door neighbor is three thousand two hundred fifty-four, that's hundred fifty percent size. Again, gentlemen and ladies, we are, we need to kind of find, these things were not considered by the DRB. They looked at it as an individual beautiful project by itself, but did it conform with size? No, it did not. Did it conform in scale? No, it did not. In bulk and mass, it's hundred fifty-five percent bigger. Or roofline orientation. Most of the houses have pitched roof. Yes, there's one flat roof. Okay, one out of sixteen is flat and you want to say that that's conformant? I disagree. Setback, okay, I agree with Ms. Izati. They conform with setback. Guidelines, minimizing alteration of terrain. They're digging fourteen feet into the, into the soil to build this house. Fourteen feet excavation is going to be excessive on this. And then on top of that, the development should be visual impact. You're adding three hundred sixty lineal feet of perimeter with ten feet, ten feet of wall space as a visual impact, as a barrier to everybody else around it. I know time is flying.
It's fine, Mr. Sagherian, how much more time do you?
I'm almost done. So, proposed project is not compatible with character inherent within the surrounding neighborhood. Please, if you see that it's compatible, show me which property is compatible. Everything is, we talked about, there's no positive design relationship. Where is the positivity in the design relationship? That was the definition of your legal representative at that meeting. Where is the positive designer? If you're going to say yes, tell me where the positive design relationship is. The setbacks are complied, I give you credit for that. Excessive grading, we heard that. There are no two stories in the immediate neighborhood. Yes, there are some in the seven hundred feet, eight hundred feet circle. Why does it matter if the three hundred feet is not met? We, as a CCNR, and I know you don't want to go into that path, CCNR allows him to come and say to the neighbors, look, I want to build a two-story house. He can gather signatures. He didn't even bother talking to us and telling us he wants to build a two-story house. Why not? There's a clause, if he gets eight votes out of sixteen, he's good to go. He didn't bother to do that. Okay? Compatibility, so we've established compatibility does not exist. This owner has ignored it. Alternative definition set as harmony, without conflict with the neighborhood. Where is the harmony? How can we see a harmony in a modern house inside a ranch neighborhood? Basement is a subterranean garage. This architect will tell you, it's not visible. Why does it matter? Well, you're digging into the mountain. You're excessively grading. I'm almost done. The standard states the visual impact, you're blocking almost the view of half of the neighborhood. Okay, so. I'm finishing here, so the? So the, no positive design relationship, no compatibility with the character of the neighborhood. Unfortunately, the ARB didn't focus on it. They focus on the aesthetic qualities. That's fine, it's a beautiful house, but it's, it's not in the middle of the desert. And then these are, our one-hour standards are here for a reason, to protect the neighborhood from unilateral abuse and injury. Please protect us. Do not subject us to this situation where we have every single family in the neighborhood harmed because there's a incompatible house. And then these are your standards. Please enforce them. You are, you are our sanity check, you are the reasonable people. What if I come into your neighborhood, right in front of your house and say, I'm going to build a two-story house that doesn't match any house in your neighborhood? Would you like that to happen? No. I'm going to finish with one quick analogy. On my way here from home, I drove from Cielito Drive to this Broadway address. I had to stop at seven stop signs and six red lights. Why did I do that? Because these are the standards that you accept, expect from every single driver. You have established standards here. These are the standards you need to establish. Compatibility. The neighborhood has to have a positive design relationship. Let this architect tell you where the positive design relationship is. He's building a beautiful house, he can build it in the desert. Thank you so much.
Thank you. How much time did Mr. Sarian have?
Thirteen minutes and thirty seconds.
All right, so I will allot that amount of time to the appellant. And then Mr. Sarian, you'll have an opportunity to respond. I have Mr. Alajadjan. Are you speaking on behalf of the applicant? Or is it going to be, will the entirety of the presentation be you? Or do you have others in your group that you would like to?
Well, we have, the team is with, we have our attorney here. The, my client's attorney is also present, he's taking notes at this moment, if you have any questions for him.
Just keep in mind that you'll have thirteen minutes.
Tom O'Connor, who's the historian, but I don't think they, any need for that to speak.
Well, you'll have thirteen minutes. Just be aware of your time as you move forward.
Well, let me, for the record.
Thirteen minutes, thirty seconds.
Thank you. For the record, I'm Aram Alajadjan. I'm the project architect for this project. And let me back up a little bit here. This project been in making about three and a half to four years since we got into the city, start working with the staff. And first and foremost, let me take, thank the staff and the, and the planning department for putting up with all this waves, you know, going through the, through the project, you know, guiding us. We have number of meetings with the, with the staff, clarifying all the, all the codes, compatibility and all of that. So I'm not going to show you all the, you know, call-outs for the compatibility and so forth. But I'm going to give you a few additional points that when we first started this project.
This is a musical interlude portion of our council meeting?
Okay.
Sorry.
All right.
To start with, when we, when my client purchased this property, and the first thing to do is to do a survey and to do a geology report. With, when the discoveries are made, the building itself right now, sitting right very close to the roadway. And I, just today, I took some pictures to, if we can show it, show them that, what, what the existing situation is. And a existing building supports the hillside, which is not allowed per code. And when we did the geology, this is sitting in uncertified soil. So I took some pictures to show you. Is that, no, not this one, the very first one, please.
Sure.
We'll come back to that, yeah. Can we go to the second one first? Number two?
Yeah, give me a second.
Okay, no, not this one. Okay, there you go. As you can see, you can see the wall of the garage, which continues to the north-south situation and it's parallel to the street. And it's sitting very close to the street. So that wall is supporting the building. And the wall currently has a lot of cracks in there. And it's basically taking all the hydrostatic pressure from the street into the wall. And, and the first slide, and you can see on the second, on the, on the right-hand side, how the half of the wall, almost over the half of the wall, is buried in the, in the dirt. And it's encroaching into the easement, which is the city easement. So what we did, we basically, with the new proposal, when we studied the site, you know, and it's sitting on certified soil, the geologist has recommended that everything is going to go to the piles. And any, any minute you touch this project, it, it needs friction piles to support the project. Because the driveway itself, it has a number of cracks. And the next, next slide, if we can show it. So the, the previous owner has applied some sort of elastomeric or dextotex on, on top of this thing to cover those cracks. But more we visit the property, we can see that, you know, the driveway is, is kind of slowly, you know, moving towards the downhill situation. And then this existing wall is sitting close proximity from the building, like four feet. So there's a structural impact to this wall as well. And you can see the moisture accumulating in there. So with a new proposal, we're moving the entire building like ten feet away from those walls. And a new project by itself, it's accommodating and it's responding all the structural needs that it needs to be happening here. So to continue this, let me say that the project basically complies with all codes and ordinances of the city of Glendale. We have, we did spend a good amount of time with the staff, with the planning. And we've gone through the design review board, where design review board members have commented on a first go-around and we have responded that. And finally, we got an approval from the design review board on this. And what I would say, I would, you know, we would basically take all the recommendations and the five conditions of the design review board approval, and we will follow that. And I think I would, at this point, I would like to ask this council to support city staff's decision and design review board members' decision. If you have any questions, I'm ready to answer them.
I'm sure we will, but let's get through your presentation, unless one of my colleagues, you have a question? Okay.
Can I, can I add a couple of more things here? There are two-story, well, there are statements were made here that was, is incorrect. There's a, within that three hundred feet, like two homes behind the property, there's a two-story building there. There are contemporary homes right north of the neighbor's property and right across from this property. You know, there, it's not that, there's no contemporary homes. This home is perfect fit for that area. And it's a, it's an upcoming neighborhood there. You see a lot of similar projects there that's in build, build. And it's more, you're going to see there's coming up within the same style. So this is nothing, not a sore thumb. You know, there's a mix of all kinds of styles in there within that three hundred feet or more, within five hundred feet. There, there are contemporary homes that our office did just about five feet, five hundred feet within the radius in a, on a Starville Drive. You know, we, we completed those projects also. So, and then I guess that's it. You know, as far as the scorecard and everything is concerned, everything is done per code and by the book. Thank you.
Do you wish to have anyone else present from your side?
Not at the moment, unless, you know, there would be some questions and.
Do my colleagues have questions?
I have a few questions on the conditions that were placed.
Okay.
Now, I know sometimes that we can, we can get into like nitty-gritty of things during the design review board and even city council meetings. The size of the south deck.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
The size of the south deck. One of the conditions was reduce the size of the south deck.
Size of?
The south deck, the deck.
Oh, yeah, we, you know, with a new proposal, we're going to be reducing that area. So we agreed to reduce that south deck area. And the first slide was showing that, how we were cutting it back, basically. We're going to comply all five conditions and the recommendation that the design review board has made on the last meeting with the approval.
Maybe this is a question for staff or, but I'd like for you to also answer after staff. But what was the reasoning behind that?
That came from board member Simonean, and it was just an attempt to further reduce massing. And it would, the sawtooth form at the deck. It was to reduce the massing in the cantilever and then allow for the extension of the retaining wall at the driveway.
And the staff agree with that condition?
It was a DRB imposed condition. It wasn't a recommendation from us. We thought it was fine as proposed. We only recommended the consideration regarding the floor-to-floor heights. And then our condition that we recommended was related to the driveway width. Everything else became conditions after deliberations and public testimony. Those were the conditions the board decided on.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
And in addition to that, we did submitted the revised plans, which is, it hasn't, you know, studied yet by the planning department, but it all includes all those conditions. We're meeting those conditions.
Do you have any arguments against any of those conditions?
We don't, no.
Okay.
It's all acceptable.
Okay. Is there anyone else that you wish to have come speak? Is your legal counsel going to speak?
I'll reserve time if there's any questions later on.
We do have, we have four callers, but I also want to give the appellant an opportunity. It would be the appropriate time for him to respond now and then for us to hear from the public, correct?
I think the normal procedure is to allow the appellant to speak at the end, is rebuttal to whatever testimony.
To everything? So we should allow the callers?
Correct.
We heard, all right, then let's go to the callers and then we'll have, we'll allow the appellant to have the last word. I believe we have four callers still, is that correct?
Mayor Protem, we have five at this point.
We have five, okay. So let's, I'll let you call them out, since I only have four of the names here. Let's go through it and let's give each person three minutes, I think should suffice.
Christopher Sarian. Christopher, you have three minutes, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Glendale City Council members. My name is Christopher Sarian. I'm calling in tonight to express my concerns and opposition to my neighbor's plan to construct a two-story building. Even though I understand owners have the right to make improvements to their homes, it is critical that these remodels do not disrupt, disrupt the harmony and quality of life in our community. To begin, the construction of a two-story building next door threatens to obstruct our privacy. I have been blessed to have grown up next door at one seven seven zero Cielito Drive with my dad, David, and my late mom, Rima Abedi Sarian. The increased height will allow the neighbors to peer into our home, invading our privacy. Privacy is a part of what makes me feel safe in our home. Furthermore, this two-story structure would disrupt the aesthetics of our beautiful neighborhood. None of us neighbors in the immediate vicinity next to this property have a two-story structure. This will set a bad precedent for future remodels in our neighborhood. The sudden change in the skyline will also diminish the overall appeal of our area. Every new owner of properties on our Cielito Street has been respectful to our neighbors when remodeling their home. A subterranean three-car garage and two-story structure is not compatible with the neighboring properties. While I respect property rights, it is essential that we prioritize the well-being and integrity of our community. I urge my neighbor to reconsider their plans and work with our community to address these concerns. Together, we can maintain the charm and quality of life that attracted us to Glendale in the first place. Thank you for your time.
Okay, next figure.
David Beckon, you have three minutes. David, go ahead.
Hi, everybody, City of Glendale Council. My name is David Beckon. I live at seventeen eighty-five Cielito Drive, which is directly across from seventeen sixty-six and slightly above. While I understand the need for the growth and development of the area, I believe that the, this particular project raises significant concerns that need to be addressed. Firstly, the size of the proposed building is still overly large for the surrounding neighborhood. It threatens to disrupt the character and the aesthetic of their area, which has traditionally featured more smaller, modest homes. The introduction, like a large structure like this could really alter the community's atmosphere. Secondly, the modern architectural design of the building appears out of place within the existing neighborhood. If you look at the pictures of it, of the rendering, it clashes with the established architectural style and it doesn't really harmonize with the visual identity of the area. The architectural cohesion could detract from the overall appeal of Cielito Drive as a whole. Lastly, the height of the new build, of the, of the building is a significant concern, especially for me and a couple other neighbors. It has, it's been obstructing a lot of views. We can see the flags and we can see the impact of the height of that property. So I invite everybody, city council, anybody there tonight, Sunday, they can come over. Sunday morning, we could have like a, a house viewing and coffee at my property. And you can all check it out. The height of the proposed building is going to obstruct approximately like thirty percent of the left side hill view from multiple of our neighbors. I urge the City of Glendale, City Council, carefully consider these concerns. Look at them one more time, evaluate the potential impact of the construction project on this neighborhood. It's crucial to strike a balance between development and preserving the unique character and livability of our community. Thank you.
David, what was your address again?
My address is seventeen eighty-five Cielito.
Okay, thank you. All right, who's next?
Greg Sarian. Greg, you have three minutes, go ahead, Greg.
Hi, everyone, and thank you for your time. My name is Greg Sigirian. I'm a licensed architect in the state of California. I'll keep it short. In reviewing these plans, this project, although it has been made modifications to reduce the size and overall quality and character to match the community, I think it was a very poor job. I do not recommend that this project go forward. I think that the scale and aesthetic of this project do not do a good enough job to match the tapestry that is Cielito Drive. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Greg. Jonathan Sarian. Jonathan, you have three minutes, go ahead.
Good evening, City Council members, and I hope you're having a good night. My name is Jonathan Sigirian, and I'm a structural engineer. And I also am the brother of David Sigirian, who lives at one seven two seven zero Cielito Drive. I have been following this project for, since it's in exception. And I am intrigued that the arguments that Mr. Alajadjan are making are mostly of the soil type and the geology type, rather than the main character of the building. At the, at both presentations, he was focusing on how weak the soil was and how bad the property is. And those are not overriding criteria to design a building with an increase, a dramatic increase in size and, and proportion. So therefore, I, I, although I, I do live with these criteria as guidelines for the design, I don't think they are relevant. And I urge you all to weigh carefully the guidelines and the standards that are for a proper design compatible with the neighborhood. Thank you, and happy deliberation.
Stepan Kasimian. Stepan, you have three minutes, go ahead. Stepan, can you hear me? Stepan?
Yes, hi, council members, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Perfect, thank you. Hi, this is Stepan Kasimian. Thank you for your time and giving me the opportunity to say a couple of words. me the opportunity to, uh, say a couple of words. Uh, I'm a physician. Um, I've been in practice for 16 years. I came to my dream home in 2014, 1780 Cielito. So I'm two homes up from 1766. Dr. Demirjian and I actually share some patients together, so, uh, hopefully we'll still be colleagues, uh, in the future, even though we have a little bit of a disagreement. When I came to this neighborhood, I was enamored by the, uh, the street Cielito. Uh, David already had mentioned, it means, uh, little sky, and it has beautiful skies, two, uh, two skylines downtown LA from my house in Glendale, and, uh, I was, I fell in love with the view. I fell in love with the structures. Uh, we do have a modern house. Our house was already, uh, a modern style. It had a flat roof. It had a trapezoidal, uh, shape, and what we did was in 2014, we looked at the CCNR and looked at the deed, and we looked at the, we wanted to be compliant with the neighbors, not upset anybody, and we felt, we, we felt that we, we, we should stick with the regu- regulations and rules, and we remodeled the house based on the regulations and rules. If everybody agrees, we will be able to get a two-story home. Uh, there is a two-story home up the street from us, like Mr. Alajadjan mentioned, but they had signed an agreement. All the neighbors agreed to it, and they went according to the CCNR and built their two-story dream house. We built our two-story dream house, but it took us four years because we could not demolish it, get a four or five thousand square foot structure, because we wanted to be compliant. We wanted to be consistent with the neighborhood views and the neighborhood, uh, styles, and every home is a single story. It's got a step ladder system. Uh, when you're driving up the street from, uh, from left and right, you're seeing single hori- single-story homes overlooking this beautiful skyline. And we want Dr. Demirjian to be also welcome to our neighborhood like we were, but we wanted to also be, uh, not, not upset the, not upset the neighborhood. And, you know, we feel terrible that they've been going through this project, uh, and getting resistance, but they're going to get, continue to get resistance because we feel that coming in and building a four or five thousand square foot home in an area where everything's two to three thousand four hundred square foot is just, just not right. So that was all I wanted to say. I really appreciate everybody's time. Thank you.
All right, thank you, and that's the last. We have one more?
Mayor Protem, I do have two more callers now.
Sure.
Talar Terjirian. Talar, you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Uh, I also live on Cielito, a little bit lower down. So their house is behind me. I'm at, uh, 1751 Cielito, and, um, I can't comment on the way the house looks or whatever aesthetics the new owners want. That's their business as far as I'm concerned, but I'm really worried about the excavation that's going to happen and what kind of impact that's going to have on our street, uh, and what kind of potential problems that it could cause. I haven't heard too much discussion about it, but I imagine that excavating for that underground, uh, part of the house that they're doing is going to create problems, probably more for the surrounding neighbors than it is for me. But I imagine what kind of issues that it's going to have, especially in a neighborhood that's built on, uh, solid bedrock like ours is. So I'm really concerned about the scope of the project from that aspect and an environmental aspect and how that's going to affect our street in general and the stability of, um, our street and, um, the neighbors.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker.
Francesca Smith, you have three minutes. Go ahead, Francesca.
Thank you so much. Uh, good evening. My name is Francesca Smith. Uh, I'm a former member of the Design Review Board and a qualified architectural historian under federal qualification standards. First off, I wanted to mention that the applicant made a very clear case. Unfortunately, uh, in the appeal, they did not cite the significant historical resources SEQA issue, um, which is that, uh, the, the historic evaluation provided by the firm that never finds anything historic was referenced by Glendale city staff as not providing, as Glendale Historical Society not providing substantial evidence. Fundally, substantial evidence is defined in SEQA as facts, reasonable assumptions predicated on facts, and an expert opinion based on facts. I have provided that as a qualified architectural historian. That's in the California Code of Regulations, Title 14, section 1564. B. Um, unfortunately, the city said that TGHS's evaluation didn't mention alterations. It absolutely did. The Pebbletec Deck, which is not, uh, which is not, um, the, the product that the owner's represent- representative said, the Pebbletec Deck was mentioned, as were the few window changes. The applicant's, uh, representative funnily talked about, uh, crap, uh, cracks in the walls and so forth that actually weren't shown in the, in the photographs. Um, the property isn't being cared for, uh, properly. So, um, the CCNRs are the big problem. The city evidently doesn't enforce them. Truesdale Estates, where the architects practiced primarily, um, is where people respect, uh, the requirement for single stories. The project architect for the original building, Robert Earl, is responsible for a number of those, and they're in a coffee table book that's about $900. So, um, in closing, I will say the City of Glendale has a consistent problem with the interpretation of SEQA as it relates to historical resources. Um, the, the residence that's there was proven to be locally historically significant. Whether or not Jay Platt thinks it's a great example of a modern residence, whether or not, uh, other people related to the car industry were more important, they didn't live in Glendale. It's the California Register for which it was evaluated. I thank you for your time.
All right. How many more callers do we have?
Mayor Protem, we do have one more caller.
And this will be the last caller we'll take, so we can give the appellant an opportunity to, uh, respond.
Vascan Plousian. Vascan, you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Yes. Um, I've been a resident, uh, in Glendale for over 20 years, and, um, I heard about the 1766 project today, and I just want to voice my disapproval, um, for, for this development on Cielo Drive. I don't think it's an appropriate development for this neighborhood. As looking about around the street, there's no two-story buildings along that street, and I just don't, I don't, I just don't see the need for this type of project to be, to be had in this nice area of Glendale. So I want to voice my disapproval today, and I hope it does not pass.
Mayor, that was the last caller.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Sarrelian, you have an opportunity to respond. Uh, will five minutes be, uh, enough time?
Very quick, very simple. So, thank you. Uh, as you, as you noticed, every single phone call was against the project as presented, and every single email that Vista has shared with everybody here, uh, is against the project as it is. That tells you something. Number one, furthermore, this architect came to this podium and said, did not refute the fact that the building was not compatible with the neighborhood. He just said that it follows code and, uh, standards. That's true, but the house is not, is not being built in the middle of a desert on its own. It needs to fit within the context, within the environment. He doesn't, he doesn't seem to be understanding that. Number two, he said, there's no, uh, there are two-story houses in the neighborhood. Well, excuse me, I've been living there for 30 years. I know better than him. There are no two-story structures in the 300-foot circle. As Stepan just mentioned, there's one, uh, 500 feet away, but it was after CCNR approval. Then they went in respectfully to every single house and asked for permission to build a two-story structure. Um, number three, none of the arguments about settlement and cracks justify a two-story structure with the underground garage. That is lack of neglect. Even now, the swimming pool is full of, infested with rodents and flies as we speak. The, the property has been neglected for the last four years, so nothing to do without that. Compliance with DRB and code does not mean it's compat- compatible with the character of the neighborhood. Let me see, I can't even read this anymore. Um, and then finally, as I said, where's the compatibility? There is no compatibility whatsoever, and it is part of your standards that has to be compatible and falling within the character of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Can I ask, uh, I'd like to ask you a question. So you, you've mentioned compatibility a few times. I've gone and looked at some of the homes in the neighborhood
Yes.
And to perhaps my simple and untrained eye, I see a variation of styles. The only things that, are you saying that it's the size and the height that's the compatibility
The size, the height, the number of rooms. Um, yes, it varies. It's, some of them are modern, more modern. They kind of like want away from the ranch, but none of them are two-story. You can't, you can't, you can't go in that direction.
Okay.
None of them are, uh, underground garage. You can't go in that direction. Where, but the houses are pitched roof mainly. There's one that's flat, okay, but out of 16, and most of them are just your average single-family residence with a flat, on a flat.
I'll tell you, just personally looking at it, and again, this is in my untrained eye, it's not like there's this cohesive, at least to me, style in the neighborhood.
Yes, but there's no two-story.
All right. Thank you. Um, do my colleagues have questions? Anything for either the appellant or the applicant? Okay. Um, thank you. I do want to ask, uh, staff about this, uh, requirement through the CCNR. Can you clarify again what the issue is in terms of, yeah, adhering to it? And, and I know that these are somewhat, there's, this has been an issue in, on council previously in terms of the CCNRs and what they represent, but what about the individuals who went and had to get signatures from folks? What, what is different now?
I would defer to city attorney on this. It's just not a part of law I'm, I'm familiar with.
All right, Mr. Garcia.
Uh, Mr. Mayor Protem, and noting the report, there's a, there's a process to enforce civil, the covenants through the Civil Code. Um, our process here is, is enforcing the municipal code, and it, we're, the city is not in the business of enforcing those, those covenants, and if there is a, if there's a violation of those covenants, it's up to property owners to challenge, uh, the construction of the project through, through civil means.
Okay. Cause I know that there's some controversial issues that have been baked into some of the CCNRs from the past that we know, don't want to bring that up.
Those obviously are not enforceable, but, um, certainly any, any covenants that pertain to what can be built, those are private covenants that are not enforceable by the city.
So if council wants to approve this, then, and someone decides, say, well, we're going to litigate this, we're going to sue because you didn't do this X, Y, Z, that's possible to do?
Yes, but they wouldn't sue us. They would have to sue the, the individual proposing to build a home.
Got it. Got it. Um, council member Najarian?
Are you ready for comments and moving this thing along?
I think, yeah, I think, well, we're definitely done with comments. I think that, um, what we want to do is have, yes, Mr. Sarrelian? I think, uh, I mean, if you would like to bring it, uh, you can, sure.
We would have to hold on to that.
Yeah, we will hold on to that because there'll be considered evidence in the hearing.
Sure. It, it is with the appeal, it, it's with the appeal exhibit 10, I believe, as well.
It's already part of the record then.
I'll just pass it down.
It's part of it. Um, so I think we're done with the public comments portion. I think now we'll just, uh, deliberate or make comments. Um, if you have any additional questions, staff here?
I don't have any questions. I, I just have, just a few comments.
Okay.
I'll pass it.
Go ahead.
So, I mean, the thing with the CCRs, CCNRs, that's, uh, that's pretty common, and I've seen it before. It's, uh, it's an agreement, uh, that's entered into upon the, um, commencement of a development with the intent that all the homes, uh, agree, all the homeowners agree that their homes will comply with certain, uh, restrictions, covenants, uh, and conditions. The, the issue, as the city attorney said, is that a violation of those CCNRs isn't like violating a city code or a city ordinance where the city can take action and begin a prosecution or put a stay order or a stop work order or anything like that. That's entirely with the individual, uh, property owner or owners who feel that they are aggrieved. Now, the, the case, uh, that they may have is not ripe, is not ready for judicial intervention unless, uh, the, um, the 1766 owner gets the green light from council to go forward. At that point, they can go to court with their attorney and say, hey, look, council has, has approved this two-story, and it's, and I haven't read specifically the CCNR, but it says all homes in this tract shall be one-story only. The judge, at that point, can decide if he wants to enforce those CCNRs and, uh, place an injunction or a stay on the construction of a two-story, uh, home. So I'm not saying that, that he's, that the, uh, appellant is wrong and that he doesn't have the right to claim that it should be a one-story home, but that's something that, uh, doesn't belong in this form. That's something that a court of law, uh, with a judge and the opportunity for two attorneys to get, to brief the case and to make argument as to why that condition should or should not be approved. So that's my, that's my thought on the, the two-story issue because it is not a city restriction. Um, the, the rest of it is, you know, aside, you know, we're talking about words, compatible, compatibility and all that. You know, these are very subjective terms. The, the problem that I think the appellant has is that even though this is going to be, if approved, the largest home in the neighborhood, it would have the, uh, largest number of rooms, the largest number of bathrooms, uh, the largest, et cetera, footprint. It also has the largest lot in the neighborhood. So that's, you know, if this were a tiny lot and the same type of house was going to be proposed, I think that, to me, that's an issue. But because it is a large lot, um, it's hard to deny the, the owner at 1766 the right to, to go ahead and, uh, build this proposed home. Uh, I agree, I mean, I would have to go ahead and, uh, agree and incorporate the, the conditions that the DRB placed on this, the five conditions. Um, and, you know, there's not much, there's not much else. There's some discussion in the paperwork about the, um, uh, historic nature of this home being owned by a, uh, a member or a couple with renown. That's what, that's criteria one or cri- two? Criteria two. P's J. Um, and, and I just don't think, you know, neither side has really addressed that. I don't think that's an issue, uh, in coming forward. The, uh, the issue of it being, um, designed by the architect, Mr. Earl, was it Mr. Earl?
Mm-hmm.
You know, he was, I'm sure he was a good architect, but, you know, he's not one of those landmark architects that, uh, you know, whose work we really need to preserve. So based on all that, I would have to, uh, if asked at the time, uh, when the time comes, I would deny the appeal and approve the DRB decision with the conditions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Najarian. Uh, Ms. Osadrian? Council member Osadrian?
I think council member Najarian stated most of the points I was going to make. Um, you know, I think the number of rooms that was brought up several times during the presentation. I think with the housing prices we see now, I don't know if someone needs five, five bedrooms because they need to help move in their parents because they can no longer afford it, or they're going to live there with pa- with friends and split that lot, and that's none of my business. And so, um, I wholeheartedly believe that, um, people should be able to build the dream homes that they want, um, if they're able to purchase that land. Um, you know, I, I do share definitely with council member Najarian, if this was a smaller-sized lot, we'd be having a different conversation. we'd be having a different conversation. I don't think that that's the case here. And so I would also move to deny the appeal and support the decision of the DRB.
Okay. Well, I think that, given the comments, there's actually no, we see which direction this is going in. But I do want to ask one question to staff because this did, you know, we had a last-minute caller come in and talk about the historic aspect of it. There is obviously on the exterior, some interesting mid-century modern elements, Mr. Platt, but why is this not worthy of consideration or greater attention in your estimation?
Well, first, the alterations that are on the house right now would make it difficult for the Historic Preservation Commission to find it eligible for the Glendale Register. But more importantly, the criterion number three, which is the architecture criterion, says that a property needs to embody the distinctive and exemplary characteristics of a style, type, or period. I'll be the first to say, I would love to live in this house. I think it's a super cool house. I don't think it meets that standard. I don't think it's exemplary. When you look at the details, the architect is definitely of interest, but not, not a major player in the world of California or Los Angeles modernism. But the detailing and some of the design elements really kind of fall apart as you come around the pool deck side of the house. And parts of it are cool, parts of it are plain Jane. It doesn't hang together as a design the way we expect, you know, best examples of architecture to do. So I disagree with the finding that it's historic.
So there have been changes, there has been alterations made, is what you were?
Yeah, not, not huge ones, but big enough. The front door was changed.
Well, I, I bring this up in context of last week, that we were looking at a home that we undesignated, right? Because of alterations or enough changes had been made. Would this be similar to that or in terms of alterations?
Well, I think if someone nominated this just for the Glendale Register, the changes are big enough that I don't think the commission would approve it. They would approve it likely if there was a Mills Act contract attached to it where they could put the conditions in to change the front door, change the garage door, fix some of the windows. And even then, they might not be as inclined, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's a guessing game for me to predict what HPC would say about something.
Okay, well, thank you. I appreciate that. I just, you know, on, on the exterior from certain angles, there are aspects of it that, as, as you mentioned, look cool. Definitely has that kind of mid-century modern feel to it. Speaking of desert homes, this looks like a home you could find in Palm Springs, right, in some neighborhoods. But I haven't been inside it. I haven't really, I defer to the experts in terms of the significance of the individuals who lived in it, although I believe, you know, the Bostain family has done a lot for Glendale in terms of philanthropy and involvement in various groups like Kwanis and others. You know, whether that rises to the level, I mean, I've made my opinions clear as to how I feel about, you know, certain homes being designated as historic simply because of the individual having lived there. And again, a very wonderful family that has done a lot for Glendale, but I don't know how it ties into the overall history of Glendale or Los Angeles or the region or the state. So thank you, Mr. Platt. I don't have any other further questions for you. You know, I, I don't know where this will go subsequent to council's vote, which I think folks can see which way we're headed. I will say that I hope that the neighbors will find a way to get along because you're going to have to live next to each other for some time. And it was interesting, as I was listening to some of the comments, I did one of the great things about having the computers here, and I can go on Google Earth and look at the homes and what people have done to them. A lot of nice homes, a lot of large homes. I don't know how many bedrooms they have, but you can go on now and find all sorts of information. And I'll tell you, given what some people have done to their homes, the thought that came, kept coming to my house is people who live in glass houses should be careful as to how you, you know, what you accuse others of doing because, you know, there was a lot of talk of standards and regulations and laws. And there were definitely things that I saw that on paper I would not want to explore further because it evidently works for your neighborhood, and so we'll let, letting, we'll let that be. And I'll leave it there. So if there is a motion to...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'm sorry, there's one thing that just came to my mind that perhaps we can add as a condition. The cactus on the roof, since there is some concern about view blockage, I don't know how big those cactuses could get. Can we limit the cactus to sparse placement and no more than one foot in height? I mean, I don't want these saguaro cactuses growing from the roof. I don't even know if that could happen, but...
Is there, is there a way to limit the height of the vegetation so it's not impacting views, Mr. Calvert?
I believe we can explore conditions that would put some sort of limitations on to it. I would defer to the city attorney at this point.
I am not a cactus expert, but I know what Mr. Najarian is saying, saguaro versus like a barrel cactus or something a little lower to the ground.
I, I don't think we would get down to the specific type of plant, but we could put some sort of requirements in there regarding height.
Okay.
Does anyone know about these cactuses?
Does, Mr. Alajjin, do you?
Yeah, I just, before, I mean, I rather not, if we...
How important are the cactuses to you? Because I would be inclined to place some restriction on the height, but if you insist on having it.
Sure. We, we purely did it for the aesthetics of it. So the proposed project, you know, if you, if you go and look at the, the flags right now, they're below the shrubs with Mr. Sagurian has. If you stand on this property, do you know, roof is going to be like a continuation of the property. So we thought adding those, it's called golden ball, they don't grow any bigger than a foot and a half to two feet in height or in width, you know? And they don't need any watering, basically. So you plant them with the pots and leave them on. It will be maintained once or twice a year, you know, by the gardener to go up and just do minor cleaning, and it's surrounded with a, with a rack roof, you know? It's been done in many places, and we have shown some photos to the staff that it's been, it's been all over, you know? It's, we're not the first one who's doing it.
So it's called golden ball?
Yeah.
And those are specified?
It's a, it's a...
Are those specified in the plans?
We can specify them. Yeah, I think we did.
I mean, as long as you specify them and you represent that they are going to be...
They will not grow any, any higher than about 18 inches, you know?
Then I would just let it go as, as is.
And they scatter. They're not like continuous planting or whatever. They scatter it with the, with the pots.
All right, so I would just, I would withdraw any additional condition and just have it per plan.
All right. And you, that is your motion?
That would be my motion.
And Councilmember Asadrian? Second?
Yes.
Motion, okay?
D1?
Yes.
D1.
And again, I really hope that everyone in the neighborhood figures out a way to get along and figures out how to live in harmony with one another in the wake of our decision. And with that, let's have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Asadrian?
Yes.
Devine? Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kasakian?
Yes.
And Mayor Brotman?
All right, with that, we are concluded with the official portions of the business for this evening's council meeting, except for the item that Councilmember Najarian had requested for us to discuss. Can we have that read into the record, please?
Item number 12, Discussion of Councilmembers, Future Agenda Request, A Resolution Congratulating the New President of Artsakh. Samver Saharam...
Shohram Nanyan.
Shohram.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Najarian, the floor is yours. I know you alluded to it at the outset of the meeting.
Right. I mean, clearly, in light of the events, a congratulations on his election is a very small and perhaps trivial effort on our part to convey our happiness in the democratic effort that Artsakh underwent to elect a president. I hope that there is an Artsakh by the time they get this, if this were to be approved, and by the time we express our happiness. But I think it's, would be a gesture of goodwill, a gesture of recognition, reinforcing our recognition of Artsakh, as well as their democratic efforts to self-govern the people of Artsakh.
Councilmember Asadrian?
Councilmember Najarian, I think in light of the attacks that happened today, I think I would feel more comfortable if we, if we were going to move forward with this, that we also acknowledge and our shared pain with them. I think it would be, the timing is just inappropriate to, or I see that as inappropriate to congratulate without acknowledging if that second piece is missing. And so I don't know how we would do that.
So this would be, I'm sorry for interrupting, this would be to place it on the agenda, correct?
Yes.
So I think we could do some input, which addresses some of the things that you and that we all feel, as well as, you know, expressing our support. And we can work on that. And I look for, in fact, I would look forward to input from everyone on council.
Sure.
And preparing something of that nature.
Sure, thank you. I generally support the gesture of showing solidarity with the individuals in Artsakh, many of whom have, we have residents who have family and relatives there. In fact, today I was corresponding with a former intern of mine, whose entire wife's family is in Artsakh. And when we were talking, he was expressing to me, and this is an individual who's, by the way, has worked for our, our federal government, served as an intern in the city clerk's office, and he was telling me that the entire family has evacuated into bomb shelters. So I think it's important for us to show solidarity. I know it's not necessarily in the purview of what we deal with on a day-to-day basis as council, but these are unique times and unique circumstances that warrant us to give these individuals who are cut off from the rest of the world some hope. So if that, if that helps, I support it. Thank you. Councilmember Najarian?
We could put it, do we need to vote to put it on the agenda?
Yeah, just a motion, a second to put it on.
Okay, so I would move to place a, a discussion and action, including, but not limited to the congratulations of the new president, but also reflecting the, the issues and humanitarian issues and everything else that we may wish to put in that's germane to the Artsakh people at this time.
Councilmember Asadrian?
I'll second.
You'll have a second, thank you. We have, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Asadrian?
Yes.
Devine? Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kasakian?
Yes.
And Mayor Brotman?
Thank you. All right, and now we move on to public comments. Can you please read that into the record and the rules?
Item number 13, Oral Communications. Discussion is limited to items, not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Mr. Durham? Durham is yours, you'll have five minutes, followed by Mauro Yakubian, followed by Valhe Maradian, and last but not least, R.I. Kisinanian.
Someone left some glasses up here, by the way. Mayor Protem, members of the council, thank you for letting me speak. I'm Alan Durham. I wanted to, the slide is up here because I wanted to follow up on last week's council hearing on streamlining the historic district process. One of last week's issues was how effective the city's outreach is when additional historic districts are proposed. This is an example of the city's historic district webpages are appallingly out of date. If you...
Do you want me to lift it up?
Yes. For upcoming community meetings, this is the webpage where you click on different tabs. Proposed South Cumberland Heights District, Proposed Cast of Verdugo Historic District, Upcoming Community Meetings. Those were designated, both of those were designated over a year ago.
Indeed.
As historic districts. If you click on these items, it will tell you there's going to be a community forum in October of 2021. They should, all right, can you scroll?
Sure, there you go.
I mean, or scroll up?
This is all it gives.
It's not showing up very well. But both of these districts, there's a tab, Designated Historic Districts. Both South Cumberland and Cast of Verdugo should be down with the other seven designated districts, and they should have all the information that those other districts have. You know, for instance, the original application for designation is posted for those seven districts, historical resource surveys, the actual district map, the individual survey forms for each home in the district, the materials and presentations from public meetings and hearings. Almost all of that information is missing for those two existing, the most recent districts. Meanwhile, there is nothing on the site at all about the three proposed districts, Bellhurst, Cleveland Knolls, and Verdugo. Not even a map. You can't even tell. I thought I might be in Cleveland Knolls, but I can't find a map that would tell me if I'm, my house is there or not. So I just wanted to point out that, you know, the city is not keeping up with that. And whether you're pro-districting, historic districting, or you're against it, I think, you know, the website is an important source for people to go to and get the information about what's happening. And if the three proposed districts aren't even on the website, how would you know if there's going to be a community forum? How would you know if there's going to be a hearing? It's just, nothing is there, and it's years out of date. I'd also like to address Councilmember Najarian's proposal and his version of the ordinance to have, I think, every signature verified against the notarized signatures on the property deeds. And my only point is, if that's codified in the ordinance, I think it should also be codified that if the city is going to reject a signature on a petition, that they contact the owner and notify them of that. I'll give an example. Our deed is decades old. My wife now has a significant tremor, and her handwriting is shaky. And someone could interpret that as it's not a valid signature. And just, but I don't think you should be disenfranchised without getting notice of that. So, and I would suggest that maybe rather than every signature, it'd be a statistical sample, and depending on whether you find exceptions, you determine whether you need to examine it more. But looking at every one's going to be a lot of work for the city staff. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Durham. Very good suggestions. We appreciate your always coming and sharing your thoughts with us. Mauro Yakubian, followed by Valhe Maradian.
Good evening, everyone. I'll cue you, and you can get that video going up. Good evening, everyone. My name is Mauro Yakubian. I'm wearing black today because I'm in mourning about the terrible events that are unfolding in Armenia and in Artsakh. I'm also wearing black because we have been, our leaders have utterly failed us in this community. I am disgusted, and so are thousands of others who have seen the video of the gay and lesbian Armenian society. The Galas event, which took place over the weekend, drew in many elected officials, including many who are seeking office. So I'd like to put that video up, please, for everyone to see. Well, there you go. This degenerate individual was mocking our precious, sacred Armenian dance, clothing that our ancestors died for trying to preserve. We had our city clerk, Susia Bajjan, there, and she was clapping, and she was enjoying herself. And it makes me wonder, considering her weekly advocacy for the Tongva people and her constant reminder to the people of this community that this is a people that have been annihilated and a people who've been trying to preserve their culture, I'm wondering if Ms. Bajjan would be offended, or would she be cheering as heartily as she was if it was a drag queen dressed in a Tongva clothing with a Tongva headdress? Well, besides Ms. Bajjan, there was our GUSD board member, Naidi Nahapetjan, and they were cozying up to the Glendale Out founder, Jennifer Haslip, or the pornographic artist, Gray James, who has infiltrated the GUSD and is largely responsible for the vile curriculum being fed to our children. Remember these names. Let's not overlook Mr. Girard Ratavoshian, who's running for the U.S. Congress, District 30, Adam Schiff's old spot. Well, he was cheering along. And how about Adrien Nazarian, the table sponsor and former California state representative who is running for L.A. City Council? Well, he was also doing his best to pander to the crowd. And God knows who else was there. And if you were at this event, shame on all of you. If you were insulted by what you saw, you've had three days till today to make a public statement saying so, but you didn't. And I am disgusted and horrified in the backdrop of our very own existence as Armenians hanging by a thread, a nine-month blockade which has resulted in starvation and death of men, women, and children. We are facing near obliteration in Artsakh, and many fear beyond. Today, there was an assassination by the Azeris of our Armenian mayor in Marduni. The enemy is closing in. The children are starving. The women and men are dying. We are barely holding on to our identity. We are trying to hold on to our precious traditions that our ancestors died in order for us to carry on. Galas holding a fundraising event so that they can fight for equality in this community. Well, why weren't they raising money to help the desperate people if they are fighting to be included as equal? What a noble cause it is to fight for equality. But I'm not sure how by mocking a sacred Armenian traditional woman by stripping down to your underwear will help your cause for equality. But I will say this. The last time I heard of a group of people cheering and laughing at an Armenian woman dressed in traditional clothing was when the Turks lined up the Armenian women hand-in-hand for them to perform their dances, and the Turks stripped them naked and burned them. You should all be condemning this mockery. If not, you would make Ataturk very proud, very proud indeed.
I do want to say a few words in regards to what Ms. Yakubian said, but I hope Ms. Yakubian will stick around for me to say that I want to give everyone else who stayed here throughout the evening an opportunity to talk before I respond, because I think that there was a lot in there to unpack that I'd like to at least address parts of it. So Valhein Muradjan, you'll have five minutes, followed by Ariks Sinanian, and followed by Ken. I want to say it's Bachelor. All right. Thank you. Mr. Muradjan. Floor is yours.
Hello, councilmembers. I emailed all four councilmembers an email on June 26, 2023. You could write that date down if you want to check your email and see if you still have it. I then brought a copy of that email to the city manager's office sometime in July. About a month later, on August 8, I came here for the first time for my first council meeting ever, talking about my request, and the reply I received was Daniel, or Mayor Daniel Brotman, saying, "I just looked here and I received your email, and I did forward it to the city manager's office to look into." So maybe do you recall the circumstances? City manager Rubik responded, "We, Mr. Mayor, since there are allegations and threats of lawsuits, we should not be talking about it here at this evening." I have received, and they cut off the sentence, "Gentleman has sent me a copy of the email and will respond to it, will respond to it, so you know where we stand with this case." Three weeks passed by, and I didn't receive anything, any response. So I came again on August 29 for the second council meeting, and talking again about the restraining order the city attorney's office submitted in court behalf of a human resources employee. As hard as it is to believe, your employee lied to you. Not only did he lie to the police officers and the police report, including the detective that later on questioned me, but he also lied to your attorney, signing his name at the end of the application. He was welcome to go to, he was welcome to go get his own attorney and proceed in whatever action he wanted, but he somehow convinced your city attorney's office to do it for him, assisting him in his life. That restraining order is not applied for by a city employee who had his own attorney, but it was applied for by your very own office. So I think it's not only that city employee, that city human resources employee who's responsible for the lies against me in court, but also the city attorney's office. On August 29, the second time that I was here, Mayor Daniel Brotman responded, "Obviously, I don't know anything about this issue, but I'll ask for an online briefing so I can learn more about it." Here we are, another three weeks later from my August 29 visit, and this is my third council meeting, so unfortunately, Daniel, or Mayor Daniel Brotman isn't here, but obviously he was briefed in the past three weeks. So I'm wondering, would I be, I'm wondering, can I expect some sort of a response from the city manager's office or the city attorney's office this week? Or maybe next week?
Thank you. Is there any response that, well, is that all you have to say?
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much. You may be seated. Thank you. Ariks Sinanian, followed by Ken Bachelor.
Hi, everyone. So I just was going to ask about something that I've emailed about. I think it's great that we're sending it to Artsakh, and I myself have already shared it on my Bridging the Borders page for my org, and I think people are doing a great job in donating, but I'm still unclear as to where the money's going, when it's getting there, and how it's going to get there, or how the resources are going to get there. And I would like someone to at least email me, because I've asked multiple times. And if you don't have that answer, I'm not sure why you would do a fundraiser, but you can at least let me know that you don't have that answer. And then about something that was mentioned last week, an Uber driver, I guess, called in about the whole Americana thing, and I completely agree with that. I think that right in front of, like, Chick-fil-A, there needs to be, instead of just making it red, which is absolutely pointless, there should be like a loading zone for people picking up and dropping off, like, for those establishments. And the same should be said about the valet area, right in front of the new, the new ice cream place, Salt and Straw, and the new sandwich place, Mendocino Farms. It's valet parking, but like, they should have a certain time period where they can drop off, because Uber Eats drivers are not going to go park all the way on seventh floor of Americana and walk all the way down and then walk all through Americana just to get to, like, Salt and Straw to pick up one little ice cream to take to their people. So it's literally just going to be violated by the Uber Eats drivers anyway, and it's just going to create like a problem for police and Americana staff. So we should come up with a solution to create, like, little loading zones for at least, like, a few cars at a time. But yeah, anyways, that's it for today. Thanks.
You.
Mayor Protem. On the first item, I believe staff had updated the information page to include details about the Artsakh Fund, how it's being organized, that it's not actually like funds that are being directed to Artsakh. That information is also updated online, correct?
Yes, Councilmember Osatryan.
Okay.
And.
Yeah, yes.
And for the details, we are in the process of working it out with a representative of the Republic of Artsakh as to where these funds, what these funds are going to be used to purchase the necessities for the people of Artsakh, and how would we transport it to them.
All right. Mr. Ken Bachelor. Floor is yours.
Members, thank you for your time this evening, especially Mr. Garcia. I appreciate your service to the city. I submitted my remarks, you know, so that you could just save time. There's an Airbnb verbo in my neighborhood that really shouldn't be allowed at all, but under the existing home sharing ordinance, it's not really enforceable. So if you'll notice on the second page, you'll see that they're advertising an entire home. You'll also see what the real estate listing is, and also the verbo marketing plan. And I would just kindly ask that we develop a new home sharing ordinance that is more enforceable. When neighborhood services intervened on my part several months ago, it was disastrous, and it made a bad situation even worse, and I'd very much like to avoid that in the future. So thank you for your time, and again, thank you for your service to the city.
All right, thank you very much. I do want to mention that I spoke to gentlemen who were here in the afternoon, who were here for a similar reason, and, you know, I would like to certainly explore how we can close certain loopholes through our codes to make sure that our neighborhoods are not negatively impacted by such uses. I brought a similar issue up a previous week, so if I need to request to have this agendized, I'm happy to do so, but if staff is going to look into it and bring us back something, I don't have to do that. What is the recommended or suggested course of action, Mr. Garcia?
Sure. Mr. Mayor Protem, we, I think we were looking at particular situations, particular complaints. We had the one that, and just to answer the question regarding this afternoon speaker, my staff either spoke to him this afternoon or was going to reach out to him tomorrow. But if you want us to actually bring you back some information, whether it's in a report or a memo, we would ask that you put it on the agenda so we can get that second and, or get, have it discussed to have put it on the staff's.
I'll make that request.
Okay, and we'll bring it back. We'll add it to the agenda next week.
Okay, and I see a number of heads nodding, or at least one of my colleagues. I'm sure we all agree that we'd like to do that. Okay.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, I do have a caller on the line.
Sure, let's listen to a caller, and after that, we'll hopefully wrap this up.
Vahan Aladadi, you have five minutes. Vahan, go ahead.
Hi, this is Mayor, city council members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk today for five minutes. Unfortunately, this public format should be the beginning of the city council meeting so more people can participate, so all the people can stay up late at night and try to express their concerns regarding their community here in Glendale. As far as the wokeism, I would say, growing up in the United States and being part of part of the movement that be, forces the gay and lesbian rights in the United States, wokeism has actually destroyed everything that was fought for. And that time, the gay and lesbian community was very private, and they wanted to stay private. And this wokeism idea of being so openly on our face, I think is just a diversion of what's happening in the country with the fact of homelessness, exorbitant cost of living, many young kids, children, I mean, adults not having the opportunity to get jobs so they can afford homes, being such a high prices. I think it's wokeism is something that the liberals and neoliberals brought into picture to basically divert the population's mind from the real issues that faces the United States. Financial degradation, manufacturing laws of this country, that's what has really happened the last 30 years under both Republicans and Democrats, that we don't have a solid manufacturing base in this country. Glendale used to be center of engineers and machine shops, and most of the homes that people live today were occupied with a lot of technicians and machine shop owners who lived on San Fernando Corridor. And unfortunately, the moral and ethics of this country has gone down the drain. I remember there used to be charming classes for young girls and young boys, that you would go to these charming clubs or schools and learn how to charm each other rather than being upfront about their sexual desires, which has basically been perverted extensively. As far as the Negor no Garaba issue, it's a proxy war between the collective West and Russia and China, and Armenians are being squeezed in that situation. And I don't think that the Armenian population has to pay for some imaginary hegemony that West wants to have over everywhere in the world. The United States has hundreds of bases all over the world, and it would be very difficult for West to do anything in respect to security of Armenia. The Armenian itself has suffered under the jackboot of the junta that have ruled that country for the last 33 years, supposedly some idea that Armenians have that independence is going to bring them heaven. As far as the Glendale area, you know, we have all these washes that were built in 1920s and 30s and 40s to prevent flooding. With today's environmental mindset, they would not allow any of those washes to be built. So in other words, none of these homes would exist today. And what the Army Corps of Engineers have done, was, or they did, is a tremendous architectural structural genius work, that all these immigrants today, they come here and they complain about, you know, how to build a house, or not to build a house, but the infrastructure was worked on extensively. And our environmentalists today would really stop building any kind of wash to prevent flooding. So we need to think about strategy, and we need to think about processes. Something is missing in this country. And unfortunately, City of Glendale is a victim of that, because those policies come from 3,000 miles away in Washington, D.C., and has nothing to do with the city council members. They basically have to obey those laws. But that's that situation that we live in, and it's very unfortunate, but we can change, we can bring our manufacturing back, we can bring our decency back, and we can bring our privacy back. It can be done. Thank you very much.
Mayor, that was the only caller.
All right, thank you very much. So I don't know if anyone else wants to say something, but I do want to say something to Ms. Yakubian. I respect your right to come and speak your mind, but the right to free speech and free expression is not exclusive to only the types of speech that you may approve of. What you showed, you could show similar acts performed by a heterosexual individual to a heterosexual audience, and I'm making some assumption he's here, but that may not be deemed appropriate by some, but you instead repeatedly singled out gay and lesbian individuals conflating issues of the Artsakh War with what they are, I'm assuming you assume that they're a threat to the Armenian community. This is not a response. We can have a conversation afterwards, but this is my opportunity to respond. But no, no, I'm just specifically referring to what you referred to, because you asked about them doing a fundraiser and questioning that during the time when there's a war in Artsakh. And I can tell you that one of my earliest memories, when I was a young volunteer for the Armenia Fund Telethon, was when individuals representing Galas appeared on the program to present a check of money that they had collected from among their friends and their membership to donate for the construction of a road which would serve. membership to donate for the construction of a road which would serve then as a lifeline to Artsakh, the road that we're all too familiar with. We all know of the Thanksgiving Telethon. And the amount of hate and vitriol that ensued following that public presentation of that check by people who were upset, who felt that it was inappropriate, was quite honestly something that I was not proud of as a person, as a human being, because these people were doing their part as members of the Armenian community to help Artsakh survive. I don't know what their fundraiser was for that evening, but I don't know if you know either, and maybe you do, but I can tell you that there have been many, many individuals that I know personally who identify, who are gay or lesbian, who have done tremendous work for the preservation of the Armenian people and culture. And I sometimes worry that in the feelings of courage that people sometimes try to muster up, to feel like they're coming here and speaking on certain things that they perceive to be wrong or injustices, that instead you're actually calling others to join an unjust mob against members of our community.
You're mischaracterizing my role.
No, it's not. I'm just saying that words have meaning. Words have meaning. Ms. Yakubian. I'm just saying that.
You're out of line. I'm very sorry to say you're out of line in what you're accusing me of. Were you not horrified by that video? Can you answer me that? Were you not horrified as an Armenian by what you saw?
What you do at your events is your business. What the members of Galas do at their events is their business. What I do with my family and my home is my business and no one else's.
Is it the right of constituents to know what their public officials are doing on the weekend in terms of what they consider to be entertainment?
And Ms. Yakubian, you had.
And clapping and cheering for a degenerate mocking Armenian tradition.
There you go.
And that's it. And I have gay friends who will stand by me. If you'd like for me to bring you, bring them with me. That's fine.
You know.
Don't conflate the issue.
I can tell you I'm not the one conflating the issue. I can just say, at this moment, when we need all hands on deck and we need to be unified, this is very disappointing.
Why is it that we're not at?
Because we don't have any lives to spare. We don't have any lives to spare.
And I can't say that that's a horrific video to be watching in light of the tragedies unfolding.
Is there a motion to adjourn this evening?
Well, I just want to say a few things. And first, I want to recognize Mauro Kubian as my sister. The point is not that she's anti-gay, and you were going that way with your statements, and that apparently seems to be out of the playbook of those people who are offended at any criticism. What I saw on that was absolutely disgusting, mocking Armenian traditions, mocking Armenian women. We had a whole report today on Armenian women, mocking their dance, mocking our culture. That's the problem. Has nothing to do with the gay or lesbian beliefs. That's fine. God bless them for donating money to Artsakh five years ago, but on the eve of this destruction, to mock the Armenian woman? I'm sorry, that's, I have to stand up, and that's what her thrust of her comments were.
Well, again, everyone has their opinions, and they have the right to share it in this forum. Thank you, Ms. Yakubian, for coming and sharing yours, even if we may not see eye to eye on that. And to you, Mr. Najarian, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll adjourn.
Oh, wait, 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 wait. Hold on.
We have new business.
All right. Before we do.
I move that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to resolve the lawsuit entitled Salpi Edgarian versus City of Glendale, L.A. Superior Court Case Number 21 STCV 07056, in exchange for a full release of all claims in the amount of $70,000. This settlement is not an admission of any liability whatsoever for any wrongdoing with respect to plaintiff by defendant or by any person or department, but is a compromise of a disputed claim.
Is there a second?
A second.
May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Asadrian?
Yes.
Devine?
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Kasakin?
Yes.
Mayor Brotman?
All right. Is there one more new business?
I move that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to resolve the lawsuit entitled Shake Bagdasar versus City of Glendale, L.A. Superior Court Case Number 20 STCV 01045, in exchange for a full release of all claims in the amount of $75,000. This settlement is not an admission of any liability whatsoever for any wrongdoing with respect to plaintiff by defendant or by any person or department, but is a compromise of a disputed claim.
All right, is there a second?
Thank you.
May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Asadrian?
Yes.
Devine?
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Kasakin?
Yes.
Mayor Brotman?
Thank you. No other new business? All right, now we have a motion to adjourn from Councilmember Najarian, seconded by Councilmember Asadrian. We stand adjourned at 9:30, 6:00 P.M. Good night, everyone.